Okay, Mr. Warden, you are good to go.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting. It's July 22nd. And we're meeting as a county council. Before I do the roll call, I want to show everybody a little prop. I hope everyone's enjoying the good weather, but this is what you'll find in my backyard. And I'm gathering that everyone's gardens are also doing well because we've had a good mixture of sun and rain, right? And maybe the farmers are happy, too. All right, so Madam Clerk, roll call, please. You're muted.
Certainly, Mr. Warden. We have all members in attendance with the exception currently of Counselor McQueen, Counselor Body, a counselor, so ever sends his regrets, but we do have Counselor Sampson attending on his behalf.
So welcome, Counselor Sampson. Nice to see you. All right, we have the land acknowledgement. Let's give it a quick second here. So we acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality and culture of the Ania Chinabek, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani and the Wendat, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Meti and the Inuit whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples? Am I the only one that struggles with the word ancestors? Ancestors? Weird the things we struggle with, huh? Okay, item number four, declaration of interest. Is there any declaration of interest from anyone? Community or otherwise, if one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item number five is adoption of minutes, starting with five A. And we're adopting minutes of County Council and Committee of the Whole dated July 8, 2021. That's moved by Counselor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Columbus. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, that's Carrie. Thank you very much. Item five B is the Board of Health Minutes dated May 28, 2021. It is moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. I believe that Dr. Era is with us. Maybe not yet. If that's the case, then perhaps Counselor Patterson, did you have anything to add?
Just two items, Mr. Warden. Good morning. Good morning, County Council. This is from the May Meeting Minutes. Janice Jackson, Bruce County Warden and Mayor of South Bruce Peninsula was welcomed as a board member. Warden Jackson is filling a vacant Bruce County seat. And Alan Barfoot was elected vice chair. Mr. Barfoot fills the position as a Bruce County resident. And for reference, so everyone is aware, the positions of board chair and vice chair are elected based on a rotation between Bruce County and Gray County. That's it, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Patterson.
So, Mr. Warden, we do have Dr. Era on the line as well.
Yeah, so Dr. Era, is there any? Sorry?
Sorry, his chat, in the chat, sir, it's saying that he's in the meeting, but he doesn't have any audio. Dr. Era, I would recommend that you leave the meeting and quickly rejoin then.
Maybe we will give a second for that because we're moving next to the, what, sorry?
There he is.
Good morning.
There we go.
Mr. Warden, I was there, I was listening, but I didn't have audio. Right now I do.
No worries. Thank you. Good to see you, Dr. Era. You know that we're on, we're dealing now with the Board of Health Minutes dated May 28, 2021. Is there, and sorry, in the Executive Committee Minutes, which are dated June 9, 2021. So anything you wish to add there?
Just an update through you, Mr. Warden, update about the current situation and surge and the vaccine, if that's appropriate from the council to receive.
Maybe just to keep things clear, what we could do is if there's nothing to add to those minutes, we do have a COVID update coming up next. Perhaps I'll get you to speak to that. Is there anything that anyone wants to add with respect to those two sets of minutes, May 28th and June 9th? And if that is the case, then I will call the question. Anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Welcome, Counselor McQueen. And so we're on to item number six now. I should say Deputy Warden McQueen, my apologies. We're on to item number six, the COVID update. Dr. Era?
Thank you. If I may share my screen, it would make the presentation that much easier. This is an epidemiology curve for the past few weeks since the end of May, when we had the first Delta case. And you can see early on, we have control enough to have the numbers less than five new cases per day, which is quite manageable. And over the past three, four weeks, we've seen different waves. Now, we put out the fire and we see it starting again. So on average, our daily new cases has been 20 cases. Our robust case and contact management, and that's throughout the past year, has not changed. The only change is the hard finding last week that we have 99% of our cases Delta variant, very efficient in the way it transmits. And usually for each case, we see two to three cases that are not the reproductive rate for the regular strains of COVID. For the Delta, it is six to nine. So it is definitely a different challenge. And last week, looking at the situation, whether we need to transfer to move to stage three or stay in stage two, the discussion took place with different stakeholders, with the Ministry, with Public Health Ontario. Their experience from other areas in the province, Waterloo, one of that had the Delta variant, that this situation will stay with us for a period of time, could be around 10 weeks. So we cannot bring it down to zero, but we can keep a lid on it, contain it, have enough control that's not going to 200 new cases per day. I'm not yet convinced this is the way it's going to be for us. Nevertheless, we just have to go through the coming few days. The last three days, we've had an average of around 12, which is encouraging that the situation that persisted for 10 weeks in other areas might not persist in Grabros for 10 weeks. And again, that goes with the robust response and trust from the public and all the variables that kept us safe for the past year. I do believe there could be a different scenario in Grabros. Looking closer at this, at this wave, you would see a few trends. Private gathering parties at this point has been one of the two main drivers for these cases. The transient law economic status is definitely something that our society will have to look closer at after the pandemic to, because of the disadvantage, the challenge, the challenges that this group has had for a long time. But now it is manifesting itself in high number of cases, high number of high-risk contacts. And if I may, sorry. I'll open these files. At this point, we have enough cases where privacy is not an issue. And I can share with you internal social analysis of the work we do. And it would definitely provide a good picture of the level of control we have. I've, sorry, I'm just looking at at the different screen, just to bring up the two screens together. The, when I mentioned a few times that we have full control over the situation, it is controlled, does not really mean we are going to bring it to zero. We hope so, and I, again, I am optimistic we can. But the control comes from the fact that we follow up with all these cases within 24 hours. The fact that the 20 per day did not become 40 per day after three, four days. This is a rather complex graph of social analysis of the cases. And if I add another layer to it, the same layer, the lighter blue are the high-risk contacts, the dark blue are the cases. And it's rather complex, but I can walk you through parts of it and all of it, more or less depending on how many questions there are going to be after. This is an event, a cluster related to low-income government housing, where there is crowding, there are transient community, some substance use with some of these individuals. And the other one, this one is the, one of the parties in the past 15 days. All these cases are between June 1st, July 1st, July 15th. And these are the residents, all these cases are from On Sound specifically, not for Grabros. And this party was not in On Sound, nevertheless, the residents attended. And if you look at the general trend, these two are the main drivers. These events here are related to transient community, crowded housing. Some of these, we suspect are related to the party. It's just the link is not there without full disclosure. But based on the information we have, most of these cases that we've seen over the past few weeks are related to these two groups. Another trend that comes very clear, whenever the cases are attending regulated places, and there are around 12 of them on this slide, hospitals, there was two exposures from two cases there. There were a few high risk, but no transmission. Those were closed, these are closed at this point. There was a restaurant exposure. There was a restaurant exposure, again, new cases. And that repeats over and over where you would see that there is enough evidence that the transmission within the regulated workplaces, regulated settings, organized events, organized celebration, whether it is funeral or home, or you name it. It's, there is no change in the risk of transmission, and that's the ground for saying, yes, we can move to stage three. Here, there is a really sad story where a transient person infected their child to, a transient child visits their other parent. And the parent has a partner, both of them carpool, so that's where there is another potential risk of transmission between the two, to a workplace. None in the workplace were either exposed. And the one who was exposed, three of them, none of them converted to a case. So you would look for their long-term care, perfect control, nobody was exposed. There was up there, sorry. Doctor's office, again, perfect control. You look at retail shop and other settings, there are 12 of them here. This is one of them as well. This is very telling, childcare facility daycare. One case, many children exposed, no transmission. Again, in Grabros, at this point, there is one childcare outbreak with two cases only. And that's the only outbreak in regulated settings that are not commercial. There is another one in a commercial setting, but again, it's a small one. So from this, there is quite reassurance that we have control in Grabros as a community, as a society, as businesses. And it is unfortunate that there, we have two groups of, in our society, the disadvantaged people dealing with many challenges and the younger people. And the approach is totally different. With the first group, we're providing support from all partners and housing from the county. I want to thank the group, the county and the teams in the county, whether it's EMS or housing or the other teams. And for the other one, we have issued a few media releases to educate, but also to send a warning. And there will be charges coming to people who did not comply with providing early information that could have protected some of these cases from being cases early on. And if I can finish my update, Mr. Warden, with the vaccine front. This is where we're at, at the end of June. It's even a bit after June 23rd. 24% of Grabros vaccinated two doses. Within less than three weeks, we were at 60. Right now, we're at 65% two doses. And that is significant. And I want to thank everybody also who advocated and helped connect with the provincial level to ensure we have supply of vaccine. And this is the number of doses for first dose, 75% of our population. That's the same comparison just by age group. And our goal for the past three days were, or three weeks, was to get the people who had their first dose to get their second dose. On this graph, you would see the light color, people who received one dose, dark color, two doses. So our efforts were under the curve, under this curve, to increase this color. And we have succeeded in achieving most people getting this dose. And we can, will continue to the end of July with mass immunization. And we'll be ramping up the targeted immunization, and that will be the space over the curve. Over here, those are the people that have not received either first or second dose. They have not received their first dose, younger people. And there's between 12 and 40. We have different strategy, whether communication or access, that I am confident we will be able to reach the majority of the public in August, based on that target. And one final point, our target was 75 for the herd immunity or theoretical herd immunity for COVID. That is, that is very well done as we go through July. And the hard finding is the Delta variant, the herd immunity is 95, 90 to 95. Extremely difficult to achieve. Our discussion three weeks ago, that will be done by now. And we've done what we needed to do, but obviously the target changes with this Delta variant. And going into the fall, if we don't have that high level, 85 plus percent, and that's, that will go eventually as well. The chief medical officer, health office predict a very troubling fall if we don't have that level of vaccine, just because of the Delta variant is starting in the province, and it is more or less a new pandemic. I'll stop there, Mr. Warden. Open to questions as always.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Era. I see Counselor Desai has got a question.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I have a few questions. And so some of them, I think, have been answered through the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Era, for that presentation. The one question was why the case numbers are important at this point? Because my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the whole point of the vaccine is not to prevent cases, to prevent the serious effects of the cases, correct? It says to prevent hospitalizations and deaths.
Through you, Mr. Warden, both, there is enough evidence now that having the vaccine will reduce the risk of transmission as well. Does not bring it to zero, but it reduces it.
Okay, thank you. That answers that. The other question, the other question I had, as you've mentioned, that we're continuing mass immunizations until the end of July. What happens after that? If someone wants to get inoculated, how do they, how do they go about doing that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there are two main strategies. One of them is the targeted immunization strategy to send mobile clinics pop-up drive through to different areas to ensure access, and that will be over the coming six weeks. Simultaneously, but will extend beyond, is the traditional vaccine system for sustainable rollout through primary care, pharmacy and public health clinics, similar to the flu shot, the annual flu vaccine.
Okay, thank you. And so people will still be able to get the vaccine if they so choose to after July, correct?
Certainly.
Okay. There is also, and the communication from the public health unit has been absolutely terrific. There's been, personally, I'm a statistics person. I love statistics. I've, I shouldn't say enjoyed, because that's, that's not the right word. But I've appreciated the communication using the statistics to show why getting vaccinated is important. The one thing that I felt that the communication was perhaps lacking on was the ability to change your appointment times. Initially, I was, I was supposed to get vaccinated. My second dose is supposed to be tomorrow. And I got it changed to the end of June instead. And that was a matter of two days between booking my appointment for July 23rd and then rebooking it for the end of June. It was a matter of two days. So I think there is still some confusion around that change. And so if public health could maybe put that out in their communications as well, that you should check back again to see if there are earlier appointments, just so that people who do have appointments booked down the road do not assume that that appointment will be, will be kept, because we're not doing mass immunizations beyond July. If public health could maybe put that into their communication stream as well, I would, I would really appreciate that. And then the final question I had is, unfortunately, there has been more than the average vaccine hesitancy regarding the COVID vaccine. There has partly due to the misinformation surrounding the mRNA technology and partly due to the lack of understanding on how the different, the four, three or four different types of vaccines that are available, how they work. How do we get to 85%, given the fact that there is increased vaccine hesitancy? Is that an unrealistic goal? And if it is an unrealistic goal, then what is the future for, not just Ontario, well, for Grabros, but also, you know, for society as a whole? Like, I just don't think it's feasible for us to continue living the way we do right now. So what happens if we don't get to 85%? And that'll be my last question. Thank you, Warden Hicks, and thank you, Dr. Era.
Okay.
Mr. Warden, the two points you mentioned, the first one, I would appreciate some elaboration on it related to the communication about early rebooking, because that has been our targeted communication. We had daily radio messages that play every hour, ask people to book earlier. We sent multiple media releases. We send daily email to all people who booked their appointment in August, October and September and October. And we've been working actually with the ministry through their call center to reach out to these individuals by phone, not just by email. There's an eight daily email that goes, please book earlier, and this is the link. So maybe I'm misunderstanding the point, if you can elaborate on it, because I want to ensure that we improve our communication if there need be.
And fair enough. Thank you for that information. So like I mentioned, I rebooked, so I haven't received any of that. I get most of the information, most of the Grabros Health Unit communications I do see is on social media. So I can appreciate that I missed out on the emails and so on. So I will retract that comment on the communication. So thank you very much for that, Dr. Era.
Thank you. And if you did not receive it, maybe after the meeting, I can connect. I am interested why our system failed to send, to reach.
Because I rebooked, rebooked it for earlier. So I rebooked it a long, long time ago, which is why I wouldn't have been part of the system to receive that email.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for that clarification. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, the final question was about vaccine confidence and vaccine hesitancy. And it is not unexpected to see that people might be hesitant. It's worth laying the stats about vaccines in general. You'd find anti-vaxxers, people who would refuse the vaccine, no way they would get close to vaccine. They're less than 5%. They're actually 2% to 3% in many communities. They're just vocal on social media. And the 60, 70% of the public would want the vaccine immediately. And that's what we have seen when we designed the mass immunization to capture this early group. And there is a group about 20 to 25% who are not refusing the vaccine. But there could be, there are usually multiple reasons that would relate themselves to two groups, access. And this is where the targeted immunization would help. Some people have no way of transportation, or they cannot leave their work. So if we deploy units to the workplace, deploy units to Amish, Mennonite community, we will see more uptake. And the other group, vaccine hesitancy, there is, there is a field of study about that. And there are multiple reasons for it, whether it's faith-based or belief or tradition or lack of information. And we will work on all these fronts. There is enough material and study about the subject to ensure we can do everything we can there. And the Warden actually used analogy the other day that I've used since, and has been very receptive. Mass immunization is similar to losing weight. And for a person to lose 40 pounds, it's effortless to lose 30 pounds. Then the last few pounds are going to be very troublesome to go through and needs more perseverance. And similarly, in vaccines, this is a trend that we've seen before. If we don't reach the 90% or the 95, definitely we're not going to reach, because children under 12 are not, cannot get the vaccine, and anti-vaxxers are 2%, 3%. They add up, we cannot reach the 95. We most likely end up with an experience that will, that's taking place right now in the UK. They decided to lift their restriction at 85% of the population receiving one dose, 66, two doses. So that's a level that is, we can probably achieve and exceed. And they lifted the restriction based on the fact that hospitalization and death are not as high. And the hospital system can handle that, and the fact that most of these are in people who are not vaccinated. So that, that could be the experience, if successful, in the UK, could be replicated here. Other than that, we'll just have to evaluate and change course based on the information and the situation in Ontario as we go.
Okay, Dr. Era.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Era. And sorry, just the last, last statement on one thing Dr. Era mentioned with regards to the Mennonite community. And I understand that you did have a successful pop-up clinic in Osprey, and there is one planned for Flesherton as well. So I do appreciate those efforts that the Public Health Unit has undertaken. Thank you very much for those responses, and I apologize for taking up so much time.
No worries. Counselor Burley, I do see your hand. Is it related to something that was just said, or shall I put you in the queue?
It's a question concerning COVID I would like to ask Dr. Era.
Okay, then I'll put you in the queue. Counselor Potter, you are next.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, Dr. Era. Thank you. I wish I could be as good at explaining that chart as you are, because I think that's very educational for the public. And I hope that we can find some way, or you can find some way to share that with the public so they can see what the effects are, because I think that illustrates it very nicely. The thing I wanted to ask about, though, is we're seeing a resurgence in the US and other places, of course, but in the US, and we're expecting a four-state this fall. How do we avoid that? And do you have any, any plans for, for programs, promotion, whatever, to try and, to try and avoid at least having it become as bad as it looks like it might be to the south of us? Through you. Yeah, and I'm referring, of course, to the fact that a lot of people just are not getting vaccinated. The numbers aren't there in a lot of states, and they're seeing a resurgence of cases, new cases.
Through you, Mr. Chair, vaccines is our only way out of this situation, no question. And all this information will be released to the public in either a media conference or one-on-one with the media outlets. We had to reach a certain level of number of cases to ensure that privacy is not going to be threatened when we release this information. And at this point, we are at that level. So it will be public and will be shared with. Um, so it it will be public and will be shared with the partners and and anybody who would benefit from that knowledge.
I think it's interesting now that we're seeing them use the phrase, the pandemic of the unvaccinated. Uh, Counselor Sampson, you are next.
Thank you very much. So through you, Mister Warden, um to Dr. Era, I want to thank him for uh for your work and helping us with our pop-up clinic because I think you're right. We've moved into the mode where access, I'm calling it convenience, is going to have to be the key priority in having the vaccine available. We just need to make it convenient for people uh to get that last uh, you know, two, ten, five percent, whatever the number is of people who will take the vaccine, but either are finding it too difficult, even though we've made it reasonably easy for them to get it. Um, and the walk-in clinics that you've helped us organize here in the Blue Mountains have been very helpful in doing that. I think we appreciate that. Does the Health Department have then the data on the postal codes where some of this vaccine gap may exist? I mean, every time you go and get your vaccine, you're asked for your health card so they know who got it. Your health card all have postal codes. So I'm wondering whether without identifying individuals, regions might be helpful for us to get a hold of is to understand where that vaccine gap is. And then so therefore where we would focus uh uh, you know, uh clinic attention. And secondly, to what extent have the local physicians been asked to engage in this campaign? Um, I know the clinics here locally have been done through one or two of the physicians, but it doesn't seem to be me that all of the physicians in the area are as equally enthused about um participating in the vaccine campaign as perhaps maybe they should be.
Through you, Mister Chair, I I will probably tackle the second question uh earlier. Uh, if I uh sorry, I'm just uh trying to share my screen. The, sorry, can I ask uh if you're seeing two graphs or one graph on my screen?
We're seeing two.
Two.
Now we're seeing one.
Yeah. So this graph would show the um vaccines that were distributed uh based on on mode of delivery. Mass immunization uh did the bulk of the work, and and that's the plan. Primary care and pharmacy have been boarded uh since uh uh since I would say we we start working on it since um January and February communication with uh these partners. And as soon as the ministry opened the goal, the door for uh Kovax, which is a software that can be used uh for uh for vaccine, uh the door was opened for these partners. Uh, we were, we added them to the um uh to the task force for vaccine or not the task force. Sorry, that's not the um not the right term, to to the uh uh delivery methods. And uh currently, we have thirty-five pharmacies in Grey Bruce, twelve family health teams. Not all family health teams are uh providing vaccines and their engagement is different. Uh, I would I would look at, for example, the uh Northern Peninsula, the family health team there is is uh doing the bulk of the work on their own. Uh, we're providing them with more resources, more supplies just to uh for equity purpose. Uh, so we're we look at the distribution in Grey Bruce, and we wanted to ensure areas where there are no hubs, there is another method of delivery. And we've connected with the municipalities early on, mapped out locations, community centers that family health teams or pharmacies can use. And some of uh these partners have utilized that, some uh of them vaccinated in their own clinics. Uh, the the bottom line to that process is there there is delivery methods to cover all parts of Grey Bruce. And we always look at equity to ensure that there isn't uh any municipality or group was left behind. The first part of the questions uh about postal code, that is one way to to map out where the vaccines are and where they're not. But it is not the most practical and it's not necessary at this point, and I will explain why. Uh, people uh have a postal code based on their uh health card. Uh, however, they might be living somewhere else. We know that there are many visitors in our area. So uh looking at the postal code can can really bias the assessment uh in in many ways. We know that the uh goal for mass immunization was to open it for everybody who wants it. Now with the targeted, we can go to municipalities based on the level of vaccine. So instead of looking at the people who are not vaccinated, we're looking at the people who are vaccinated. And if we look at municipalities that have not reached the seventy-five percent, that's where we're going to be sending the mass uh the targeted uh clinics. Uh, if we go further in time and late August, I would expect that uh all municipalities are over the seventy-five or over the eighty. And and at that time, uh, we we can um we we have started this already, communicating with the local municipal leaders and and I'll I'll mention this uh um recent experience with the um um Mayor McQueen. He already proactively mapped out the community that is um uh does not have transportation or the people who want the vaccine but don't have access. Uh, so that that uh level of granularity in understanding the community would is is superior to what the postal code versus Kovax code can can be cross-examined and to find out cer- certain people are local or visitors or or not. So in in short, we have better techniques than that. Do we have those access to the post code? No, we don't. And and for many reasons related to privacy, related to our system, having different uh um electronic medical records. Uh, so we don't have it, and I don't think the the system in general in the province has it. Uh, do we need it at this point? No, we don't need it. And that's that's uh my my assessment and very comfortable and confident of it.
Let's go, Counselor Sampson. Excellent. Uh, next is Counselor McQueen or Deputy Warden McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mister Warden. And again, thank you, Dr. There for everything you're doing. And I I want to put this out. You just raised it, and I think for all us county councillors, um, look at your municipality. If you see there's a a gap somewhere or you can try to uh make a a uh an improvement on people getting vaccinated, reach out to the Grey Bruce Health Services and and Dr. Era because it does work. Uh, I will say that our pop-up clinic last Monday was such a success. And I I think you maybe have seen or heard this, but you couldn't wipe the smile off my face to see that the Mennonite community was lining up and getting vaccinated. And I tell you, that just made my day. And it just uh is it was so great to see. But the thing is, if we make it available uh close to our community, to those areas, there's no reason. There's no reason. One guy said to me, he says, uh, I was scheduled to go to Berry. He says, I only live five minutes away. This is so great. So if we can target those spots where, you know, there's no excuse, we're there. And so again, uh, work with the work with Dr. Era and Grey Bruce Health Services, look at for those areas that you can reach out. And we're having a second one uh in the complex in Flesherton next Tuesday. So work with them because they're great. And it's just getting that number up so we can uh all have a a great fall and that type of thing. The last comment I will make is uh I think that Mister Warden, you make you make a good or or quite interesting comment. The pandemic is those that aren't vaccinated. And you know, I think as a few others said, as their numbers people, well, it's like probably going to war in the you know, mid-seventeenth century, and you didn't put your armor on. The probability is probably much greater if you don't have that armor on than and having it on. So, you know, I think probably is, I think, what I think one time Dr. You said ninety percent of the new cases are those that are unvaccinated. Those numbers don't lie. Those numbers are the telling tale. So I would think for those that are, it's their choice if they wish to get vaccinated. But you know what? If you're just looking at the numbers and and saying that stuff, that's got to speak for its volume itself. And I think as long as you keep communicating that part of where that where who are who are getting uh sick and getting ill is from those that are unvaccinated. So that will speak for itself. So again, thank you for everything you do, Dr. Era. And staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Um, next is Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mister Warden. Uh, and again, Dr. Era, thank you very much for you and your team for all you do. One thing I tend not to do is to listen to the COVID news media sources because it's just scary when you listen to it. But one thing caught my eye the other day. I wonder maybe if you could comment. I noticed that the cruise liners have banned anyone that got two different shots to attend under cruises. I wondered have you heard any comments about that?
Through you, Mister Chair, definitely this is something that uh inter-jurisdiction issue is gonna be addressed at at the federal level most likely. Where in in Canada, uh exchanging vaccine is uh is allowed in certain other jurisdictions. Uh, it it's not. So if people don't have two doses of Pfizer or two doses of Moderna, they will not be considered by that jurisdiction as fully immunized, although they have one Pfizer and one Moderna. Uh, it it is uh, uh, there there is, from evidence point of view, definitely, there there is evidence of safety and efficacy of uh mixing vaccines uh from um uh jurisdiction or from regulation point of view of travel. Uh, there is definitely an issue that that's I had has been identified. There could be uh solutions for it down the road, whether to to have another dose from one of these two vaccines to complete uh the the uh full vaccine based on both jurisdictions. But uh at at to you know, at the level of managing a pandemic, I would encourage people to get the first vaccine they can. And uh in our area, we have enough vaccine that we're providing both Moderna and Pfizer in every clinic that we deploy. Uh, that started uh uh a few days ago, and and that will ensure that people will have their choice as well. Uh, Nancy's recommendation is to have two doses of the same type if if possible, if not, to provide the different type.
Thank you very much. Um, anything else, Counselor Burley? Good. Uh, next is Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, County Council. Uh, thanks, Dr. Era, for your presentation. My question is uh regarding the uh ongoing debate around vaccination certificates or passports and how or if they should be implemented, you know, based on a lot of the information you provided today. One would think that there's probably merit to that. So I'm just wondering if you could comment on uh you know, you know, on that. I believe the science table uh just yesterday or today is recommending that there may be some merit to some sort of certification. So can you please comment on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Warden. Uh, if I can go back to a month ago, we talked about this, and my answer was different from and my answers today. My answer at that time was based on the seventy-five heard immunity. Uh, we we have confidence and we've seen the application of it that we can reach the seventy-five. So the protection for the whole community can happen uh through the people who want the vaccine. And and there will be no merit for for a mandatory approach um or or incentive, this incentive approach through a passport. With the hard finding last week that uh the Delta variant uh i- is the prevalent here and it's going to be the prevalent in the province. And the Delta variant requires a level of over ninety percent. Uh, it there is definitely more merit to to this. My understanding from discussion with the provincial level, uh, the passport approach is is not uh desirable. Uh, there will be most likely local approaches uh where there is encouragement to employers to to have policies. And that's a media release we sent yesterday. Uh, recommendation uh from this office to employers in Grey Bruce to have policies encouraging people to have the vaccine. There could be different mechanisms to it, whether through the Ministry of Labor, yeah, or or uh through uh the school system. Um, but my, again, there is a merit for it at this point with the Delta variant. Uh, the discussions don't reflect that this is a provincial direction.
Let's go, Counselor Mackey.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Keveney. You're next.
Thank you, Mister Warden. Good morning, County Council. And thank you, Dr. Era. You just mentioned uh persons with dual vaccines and and potentially um some difficulty with the traveling should they wish to do so. So I'm wondering if you anticipate there'll be some sort of a booster offered or some scenario where folks in that situation may be able to uh to get um a second or third dose of a particular vaccine to make themselves in a position where they uh can be recognized as as being then fully vaccinated.
Through you, Mister Chair, uh giving a booster vaccine uh is is useful in different scenarios for people who have low level of immunity or immunocompromised condition. It it is warranted. It it will be definitely uh based on on that need. For the general public, a booster at this point is not warranted. There are studies uh undertaken, being undertaken at this point in time as we speak, to see when that uh recommendation will happen, if it happens. And that will be based on uh testing the immunity level in people who receive the two doses. And uh as soon as uh it decreases significantly to under a certain threshold, uh, there there will be a recommendation for a booster. Uh, we don't know this at this time. Uh, if I step back from the vaccines, you would you would hear uh or sorry, if you step back and look at the coronavirus as as a family, the the immunity usually lasts between one year to two, three, two, three years. So the coronavirus uh COVID nineteen uh is not going to be different. Most likely, it's going to be within that window. Uh, the effectiveness of these vaccines will not be determined unless we go through the course of clinical trial and studies that are being undertaken. So uh yet to to hear about that. And if I can finish that point, Mister Warden, with a recent announcement from an official in world health organizations talking about mixing vaccines. And they were referencing uh this phenomenon where people self-prescribe three and four doses. And and that is not recommended. That's recommended against one hundred percent at this point. And if there is evidence on the road for need, it will be, it will be shared.
Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, I do not see any other hands. And if that's the case, boy, we've had a very good uh discussion. I wish everyone could actually uh see this and and hear these answers and hear these questions. It's been very, very good and educational. Um, Counselor McQueen, you do have your hand up.
I do want to pass a story that I heard just the other day on CBC Radio. And I think it was down in Maryland in the United States where this uh woman was speaking about her husband, and she got vaccinated, but her husband was too busy. He just was too busy. He was busy at work, busy at work. He didn't get to get vaccinated, and he came down with COVID nineteen. And the sad part, he passed on. And she's been an advocate to sort of speak to others to say don't hesitate, get out there, there's no reason. And it just, it just was a story that sort of hit me. And I just thought, you know, it's it's so true that you know, if you can't take the time and 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 it just, it just showed a small example of how fast things can change in people's family and their lives. And and she'll she's, so she's very forceful and 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 very sad, but she is trying to spread that word to others that it needs to happen. And from her experience, don't don't wait. So I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Thank you very much for that, Deputy Warden. Dr. Tara.
Thank you, Mister Warden. Uh, I I really appreciate this last comment. Uh, and and again, I I thank Mayor McQueen, but I can thank everybody around the table. We've been working with with the different all municipalities on the vaccine. Ma- Mayor Allar has been a a champion in in a way. He he uh uh organizes things proactively, and and I can give examples all around the table. The the example that Mayor McQueen mentioned is really key. Um, vaccine protect, regrets don't. And and we live with regrets for for life, usually, if if there are of this magnitude. And and if we forget everything we talked about today, I do believe the next one would would cover it. We have hundreds thousand people in Grey Bruce vaccinated two doses. And if each person talks to a younger person or to a person in their life that are not vaccinated, to encourage them to get the vaccine, to provide information, to encourage them to talk to a physician, to a pharmacist or to a dentist, to to get the advice from the healthcare provider or to public health. I do believe we can achieve the eighty-five percent uh again, effortlessly, if if all of us are ambassador to this uh mission for the coming few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Era. Good discussion. Thank you for your time, White Hill, hey, because I know just how busy you are. Appreciate it very much. Okay, we're going to move on with our uh agenda, um turning to item number seven, good news and celebrations. Anyone have anything there to present? It's not seeing any hands. Oh. Mary Lou.
Thank you, Mister Warden. Um, I just wanted
I just wanted to introduce our two new staff members to County Council. The first is Sue Murray. Sue Murray joined us on Monday as manager of accounting and budgets. Sue is a chartered professional accountant with senior level experience in municipal public sector accounting, as well as public accounting. And this is a position that you're going to see a lot of. Sue will be an instrumental lead in managing the budgets, presenting budgets, tenure capital, as well as financial updates. And so we're certainly happy to have Sue with us. Can't see whether she's there.
Hi, everyone. I'm pleased to be here. I'm very excited for this opportunity. I look forward to working with you.
Welcome aboard, Sue.
And the next, Catherine De Browa also joined us on Monday this week as a financial analyst. She comes to us from the town of the Blue Mountains, where she was most recently a budget analyst. So she has a good amount of municipal experience, and she's going to be a valuable member of our team as well.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you, County Council. It's nice to see a few familiar faces, and I look forward to working with all of you as well.
Welcome, Catherine. Councilor Potter.
I just wanted to welcome both, and especially we're sad to lose Catherine, but she's gone to a good place. So good luck, Catherine, and we know you'll do great work for the county.
Thank you, Councilor Potter.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I have some thank yous that I want to relay, and it's kind of written out, so here I go. I want to say thank you to the organizations, going back to COVID again, of course, who've been invaluable in responding to the COVID crisis efforts. And while great, great county paramedics, housing and social services staff have gone above and beyond during the pandemic to respond to crisis after crisis, there are many staff of our partner organizations who have been absolutely critical on the front lines of helping our vulnerable residents to get vaccines, to have shelter, food supplies, mental health and addiction support, and to isolate safely when that is needed. They don't get the recognition that they deserve, and I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge all of them, especially since some of them are actually with us this morning. So very quickly, and at the risk of missing out some, and I apologize if we do, the United Way of Greve Bruce, Francesca Dobbin, and Tony McGregor O'Shaughnessy. I would like to acknowledge Colleen Trask from the Salvation Army, Alice Wannan from the YMCA Housing, Joan Chamney, and from CMHA Greve Bruce, Stephanie Burley, and Ashley Timmerman from Victim Services. I'd like to acknowledge Zoe Zeta, and from Safe and Sound, Emily Whitkins, Wickens, excuse me, from Greve Bruce Health Services, Amy Bowens, Dan Prudon, Naomi Vodden, and Robin Nicola from Boost Gray Child and Family Services. We want to acknowledge Rebecca Rainsford from Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy, Alison Gauvier, who's going to be with us in a few minutes, from the Greve Bruce Public Health Unit, Dr. Rem Zayed, and Manager Ian Wright, and all of the frontline staff, of course, as well as many, many other agencies affiliated with the Boost Gray Poverty Task Force, who worked alongside to coordinate the response. Without your hard work and 24/7 commitment, many would have faced much more hardship than they did, and our efforts to contain the spread would have failed. Some of these organizations rely heavily on donations to keep them going, and I hope everyone will remember how important, how important they've been to us. Anyone else? Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I waited as long as I could. There's a rumor over this way and on sound that the longtime owner of the Meat for Dairy Queen has turned the reins over to a new owner, and I think that's worth a celebration. So congratulations, Counselor Keating.
Indeed, yes. Congratulations, Counselor Keating. And I have a nice cream cake in my freezer right now, actually. My daughter just had her birthday. Okay, moving along then. If there's no other good news and celebrations, I'm going to move to adjournment. It's moved by Counselor Desai and seconded by Counselor Patterson that we adjourn. I'm assuming no one is opposed to that, and so I will say that that's carried. Thank you very much. We'll take a second to switch gears. Does anyone need a quick break? We've been sitting for an hour. I know that we do have, yeah, I'm seeing a few nods. So why don't we take, can we say even five minutes? It's now 10:27. Can we come back at 10:35? And to our guests, would that be okay with you folks? Just put a thumbs up if you would. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. So we'll reconvene at 10:35 sharp. Okay, let's circle back. Thank you, Madam Clerk, to see if we have a quorum. Not late. You do have quorum now, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'm going to say that we are now gathered as a committee of the whole. I call this meeting to order. Council, is there any declaration of interest, the community or otherwise? Seeing none, I would ask you to declare if one does arise during the course of this, of this meeting. So we're on to item number three, and we do have a delegation. And I'm really excited about this delegation, actually, because there's some folks here who have excellent information to share. They've shared some advanced materials as well, which I had a chance to look at. But to welcome, I would welcome Ian Reich, Public Health Manager, Sexual Health and Harm Reduction with Greve Bruce Health Unit, Clark McFarlane, Chief Executive Officer with CMHA, Greve Bruce Mental Health and Addiction Services, Alison Gauvier, who's the coordinator of the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy, and Sandra McClay, McClay Winters, who is a member of the Peer Advisory Committee. And I would say right off to Sandra, I did read, and I know other councilors did too, the statements made by that peer advisory committee, and they were very, very impactful. Anyways, you folks are going to talk to us about community alcohol and drug strategy, and we'll send update. I'll turn the floor over to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and members of council. Thank you for your time this morning. Can everyone see my screen?
I can, yes.
And is it showing the presentation slide addressing the drug poisoning crisis?
It is, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. So my name is Alison Gauvier. I'm the coordinator of the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy. I'm joined by my colleagues, who Mr. Warden just introduced. And we're here as subject matter experts in the area of mental health and addiction. And we're here to discuss urgent actions that councils can take to help curb an escalating health crisis that has been devastating communities across Ontario and right here in Great County. As you know, the opioid crisis has been in the headlines since about 2017, when deaths caused by the illicit drug supply skyrocketed. But really, this predates the headlines by over two decades. A new study that just came out from the University of Waterloo shows that there's been almost a 600% increase in the number of opioid-related deaths across Canada since the year 2000. And last year alone, we lost 2,426 Ontarians, yeah, here in our province. So this is a 60% increase from the year before. And the trends here in Greve Bruce, they mirror the trends provincially. We lost 24 community members in Greve Bruce last year, and that was a 60% increase over the year before. I mean, I don't want to throw a bunch of statistics in front of you, and we'll have some good engaged conversation during this presentation. But I am sharing these statistics just to show that this is an escalating health crisis that predates COVID, though the pandemic has certainly compounded the opioid crisis. And just drawing on Warden Hicks' comments from earlier, and thank you very much for the recognition to the community partners who have been working to respond to the COVID outbreaks, that this is really a community and health issue. This, this is, this is something that is, it's important that we all work together. So I really appreciate that recognition. That's a perfect segue into our presentation. We have seen locally and across the province how public health, community partners, and multi-levels of government can work together to address the complex health issue through the pandemic. We've seen this firsthand here in Great County over the last year and a half, and more recently with some of the outbreaks in Owen Sound and Hanover. We will talk about in this presentation what we've learned from our response to those outbreaks, and specifically, we'll point to how bringing services to people, meeting them on their own turf in a coordinated way, listening and providing options, we can literally see people's health improve over a matter of days. So it was a real concrete learning for a lot of service providers in our community to be able to see those positive changes in such a short amount of time. Yeah, so I don't want to speak for too long. I just want to sort of introduce the members of our panel today and just mention that, you know, we don't have a saving grace of a vaccine for this crisis, but we do have the life raft of collective action, and that's why we're here today. We're looking to work with all levels of government and to collaborate on the multi-sector, multi-level response that capitalizes on the momentum built during the COVID response. I'd also like to invite Barb Fady and Kevin McNabb to share their comments throughout our presentation and afterwards in the Q and A, as they've been deeply involved in the recent response to the COVID outbreaks and pop-up clinics to get people vaccinated, and have been true and longstanding champions of harm reduction in supporting people with addiction in our community. So I'd just like to open the presentation by introducing Sandra McClay Winters. As Warden Hicks mentioned, Sandra is a member of the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy.
Now, those are attributed to a multitude of factors. There's not one cause, and COVID isn't the cause. Inequities are the cause. What we did see definitely was there was a decreased access to services, especially in that first wave of the pandemic when we didn't have the information that we currently do have. There was also a significant amount of stress related to the pandemic. And what we saw was an increase in substance use across the board, from alcohol to cannabis, and yes, to illicit drugs. But we have to reframe our thought about that. People use substances a lot of times to cope with challenges and stressors in society. So the choice of substance really doesn't matter. What matters is that more people ended up starting to use or using more often. And as with any increased use of any substance, negative effects will follow. The one thing that the opioid supply has that's very different than our legal drug supply is the fact that it's extremely toxic. We're talking 100 times more or more toxic than Demerol, for instance. So fentanyl and carfentanil are really the main components of street opioid supply at the moment, and they're mixed with a whole slew of other substances, from methamphetamines, the benzodiazepines. And a lot of times, you just don't know. So they are very toxic. Increased use, increased rate of fatalities, unfortunately. However, another important factor to this was social isolation. We were telling everyone, stay alone, don't go out. But one of the core principles of harm reduction is to ensure that if you are using toxic drugs, or using drugs for that matter, street drugs, to use in groups. And we were telling people not to for a long period of time. So there's no illusion that, as a result, we did see an increase in fatalities related to opioid drug use. There is good news here, though. I think over the past few months, we have seen, and as Warden Hicks and Alison have eloquently described here, we can combat this epidemic, and we can do it together. We can't do it as one agency alone. We need to all be together to do this. When we were able to wrap services around those most in need, we did not see an overdose occur. We didn't see fatalities occur. And what we saw was an increase in positive health outcomes in a very, very short period of time. This is very possible, and we can do it. We just need to all do it together with the same amount of effort. If we can move to the next slide, I'll just bring forward a bit more local context to our numbers as well. So as you can see here, there's no illusion to everyone. Alison mentioned the date of 2017. That's really when the opioid epidemic really took hold here in Ontario. And it's not necessarily because of increased drug use. It's because the toxicity of substances in the streets have increased dramatically. 2019 saw one of the sharpest increases throughout the province, and that was highly related to the presence of carfentanil throughout, which is 100 times more toxic than what fentanyl is. So that compounded, moving into the year 2020, with a pandemic where we again did see lots of recommendations to stay alone, stay isolated, and the stress and isolation, as a result, did cause that increase in use. And as you can see, very unfortunate statistics that Alison did share, 24 families did lose a loved one last year related to opioid poisoning due to street drug contamination. So again, I don't want to talk a lot about just statistics, but we've also seen a trend of our emergency room visits have obviously been on the rise, as well as hospitalizations has been on a rise. One trend we are seeing, however, that hospitalizations have remained fairly steady between 2019 and 2020. Also, the calls in 2019 from our EMS providers, we get notified automatically when they respond to a call related to a primary cause of opioid overdose. Those numbers have also been climbing. 2019 was a troubling year. In 2020, we initially saw a decreased number of calls related to perhaps less people calling on one, less people asking for help. But another important thing to remember is lots of people were using alone and unable to call for help. Whereas prior to, they were perhaps using in groups, and their friends were calling for help. So there's lots of potential reasons for this, but I just wanted to draw some main points as to perhaps why we did see an increase. But the main, main cause is the toxicity of the street drug supply, and that topic will definitely revisit further on in the presentation. Right now, I'll just pass it over to Clark to take over the next few slides.
Thank you, Ian.
Before you start, Clark, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Madam Clerk, how are we doing with Sandra?
We are still having some technical difficulties, so if Clark could proceed, thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Warden. So when we factor in the cost of healthcare, lost productivity, criminal justice, cost of criminal justice system, and other direct costs, substance use has cost families, communities, and economies in Canada roughly $46 billion. Specific costs related to opioids from 2015 to 17 in Canada were about $5.9 billion, or about 12.9% of total costs. Opioids' cost came about third to alcohol and tobacco, and this isn't surprising as alcohol and tobacco are more prevalently used than opioids. While costs of substance use are, some are tangible, there are many intangible costs as well, such as trauma, family dysfunction, and of course, that human suffering. What is clear is that we do need to address the issue. And I think also, when we look at these dollar figures, a small, compared to the costs, a small injection into the service and addressing the issue would have a huge benefit if we can reduce these costs. I'd have the next slide, please. So substance use is a common, complex phenomenon that exists on a continuum. So on the one end, we have beneficial use, positive health outcomes using medication and prescribed drugs. On the other extreme, we have chronic dependence and substance use disorder. I think it's important to point out that most Canadians use some sort of psychoactive substance, for example, alcohol. And they use that without any social stigma and without any fear of poisoning related to an unregulated supply. Language, I think, is also really important. So you'll notice we do use the term substance use disorder, and I'd just like to take a moment to go over that definition with you. So substance use disorder is a diagnosable medical condition caused by repeated exposure to substances that changes brain biology, especially in areas related to motivation, cravings, and decision-making. It overrides survival instincts in favor of substance-seeking behaviors. So it is a medical condition. It is not a moral choice. People don't choose to be addicted. I think it's a really critical, really critical point as we look to address the issue. People move along the continuum for a variety of reasons, due to trauma or marginalization. Some people are more predisposed to substance use disorder, but it can also have many interwoven or even unknown causes. But nobody chooses to become addicted or to acquire a substance use disorder. As Ian had indicated, they reach out for drugs as a coping mechanism. One of the biggest barriers that individuals who live with substance use disorder face is stigma. And that stigma arises, I think, from a moralized view of addiction as a lifestyle choice. And as a result, people who live with substance use disorder are more likely to have difficulty acquiring jobs, maintaining jobs, acquiring housing, and accessing healthcare. I could have the next slide, please. So both mental health and substance use issues can develop as a result of common risk factors, such as early childhood experiences of abuse or neglect, and family history of addiction, mental illness, social isolation, and chronic pain. Again, people turn to substances as coping mechanisms. One of the challenges as well is that we have a very disjointed system. In Ontario, the Mental Health and Addiction Services are spread over 16 different ministries and funding bodies, and they're significantly underfunded relative to the federal physical healthcare system. And the sectors are also siloed. So we, as people we serve, often have a challenge of trying to navigate through a very complex system in very trying times. So it is difficult to acquire the help that is needed. So we do need to address that coordination. And I think, you know, that our recent experience in Hanover really shows the power of that coordination and collaboration, where the services in the community came together, and as Alison had mentioned, came to the people who were in need of it, need of the service, and engaged, identified the need, and addressed that need in a coordinated and collaborative fashion, and had remarkable results. People's health status improved. They looked healthier. They were healthier. Police noted that their calls were down because activity was down. And those who were living with the substance use disorder started feeling safe. They didn't feel judged. And they began engaging in conversations around service that can really be life-changing, not only for them, but for the community they live in. So just as a final note, one phrase that always stuck with me is from Gabriel Mate, who's a researcher. And he, with regard to addiction, he says, "Don't ask why the addiction. Ask why the pain." And that's the source. So with that, I will turn it over to, I think I see Sandra's back with us, so maybe. Through you, Mr. Warden, turn it over to Sandra.
I think we're still having some audio issues with Sandra.
Are we? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let's keep moving on, and we'll see if we can fix that.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. So I just want to use this slide just to ensure that everyone understands that this is a very complex issue, and there's not one simple solution. Harm reduction is not the only answer. Mental health and addiction treatment options are not the only answer. Community support are not the only answer. They're all the answer, and we all have to work together to manage the main causes of the opioid epidemic. And this chart doesn't include it, but I do want to draw on Clark's statement that, and Gabriel Mate, for that matter, the majority, not all, but the majority of substance use-related disorders have some sort of historical root in trauma or mental health conditions of some sort. So that really is, when you look at the root cause, that's one of the main pieces we do have to tackle if we want to sort of fix this situation long-term. But there's many short-term solutions that we can look at. And I've included, this isn't an exhaustive list, but this is a list that really, they're the low-hanging fruits. They're the big ticket items that if we were to manage these, we could do a big dent within the opioid epidemic itself. And these go all the way from over prescription of opioids, which recently, over the recent years, we have definitely improved. However, Canada does still have one of the highest rates of opioid prescription rates compared to the rest of the world, especially when it comes to post-clinical treatment. Opioids are one of the first lines of pain management within our system. However, the main cause of why people are dying is the toxic and illicit drug supply. And some further opportunities that we need to really investigate, and we are looking for support for these options, are things like safe consumption services. And for definitions, we did include all of these definitions in our package so that a full understanding is there. Also, the availability of drug testing kits for individuals that do use substances, as well as the offering of a safe supply program, which would be a clinically managed provision of pharmaceutical-grade medication that would replace the toxic street drug supply in individuals that are using. But another big piece of the puzzle is to ensure that people feel safe when asking and coming forward for help. And to do that, we need to get rid of stigma associated with drug use. But we also have to ensure that the people that are just using with simple possession are understanding that they will not be labeled a criminal for their actions if it's related to their substance use disorder. And that's where decriminalization can come into play to help the situation along. If you can move on to the next slide, please. When the big ask is, what can council do? And I just really, these are simple asks, but they have a large impact potentially. So ensuring that what we've done to manage the outbreak of COVID recently here in Gray and Bruce County, for that matter, is that we all work together to extend and enhance harm reduction services available to everyone that requires it at all sectors, from social services to the health sector. Everyone can offer some sort of harm reduction service, but also assessing the need for any internal harm reduction education and identifying ways that you can incorporate harm reduction strategies into any current policies and practices as well. Perhaps the biggest bang for our buck, I'll say, if you can move forward to the next slide, please, would be advocacy and support. to manage the main causes of the opioid epidemic. And this chart doesn't include it, but I, I do want to draw on Clark's statement that and Gabor Maté, for, for that matter, the majority, not all, but the majority of substance use-related disorders have some sort of historical root in trauma or mental health conditions of some sort. So that really is, when you look at the root cause, that's one of the main pieces we do have to tackle if we want to sort of fix this situation long-term. But there's many short-term solutions that we can look at. And I've included, this isn't an exhaustive list, but this is a list that really, they're the low-hanging fruits, the, the big ticket items that if we were to manage these, we could do a big dent within the opioid epidemic itself. And these go all the way from over prescription of opioids, which recently, over the, the recent years, we have definitely improved. However, Canada does still have one of the highest rates of opioid prescription rates compared to the rest of the world, especially when it comes to post-clinical treatment. Opioids are one of the first lines of pain management within our system. However, the main cause of why people are dying is the toxic and illicit drug supply. And some further opportunities that we need to, to really investigate, and we are looking for support for, for these options, are, are things like safe consumption services. And for definitions, we did include sort of all of these definitions in our package so that a whole understanding is there. Also, the availability of drug testing kits for individuals that do use substances, as well as the offering of a safe supply program, which would be a clinically managed provision of pharmaceutical-grade medication that would replace the toxic street drug supply in individuals that are using. But another big piece of the puzzle is to ensure that people feel safe when asking and coming forward for help. And to do that, we need to get rid of stigma associated with drug use. But we also have to ensure that the people that are just using with simple possession are understanding that they will not be labeled a criminal for their actions if it's related to their substance use disorder. And that's where decriminalization can come into play to help the situation along. You can move on to the next slide, please. When the big ask is what can council do? And I, I just really, I, these are simple, simple asks, but they have a, a large impact potentially. So ensuring that what we've done to manage the outbreak of COVID recently here in, in Gray and Bruce County, for that matter, is that we all work together to extend and enhance harm reduction services available to everyone that requires it. At all sectors, from social services to the health sector, everyone can offer some sort of harm reduction service. But also assessing the need for any internal harm reduction education and then to find ways that you can incorporate harm reduction strategies into any current policies and practices as well. Perhaps the biggest bang for our buck, I'll say, if you can move forward to the next slide, please, would be advocacy and support to not only our provincial, but also our federal leadership. Basically, local efforts are important, but are only one piece of what is needed to resolve this crisis. Council can also take action by letting other levels of government know that we need them to do their part as well. We're asking council to work with us to advocate to the provincial and federal governments to make our community safer. There was a resolution drafted by MOMS, Stop the Harms, that already exists, and I believe it was included in the package as well. Just as an example of certain motions that have gone forward previously. But we also need a national plan to address this opioid epidemic, not just a provincial, but a national plan. That can include decriminalization, because criminalization again does perpetuate stigma. There's no such thing as a good, bad, or a good drug or a bad drug. There's such thing as a dangerous drug and a not-so-dangerous drug, but there's no good or bad. They're all on the level playing field. They're all substances that alter our brain chemistry. They all do the exact same thing. It's just we've labeled them legal and illegal. So decriminalization is an important piece. Perhaps another very important piece are the, the provision of safe supply initiatives. And we need to get rid of a lot of the red tape associated with that to open some of these types of settings. Causes a lot of challenges and a lot of difficulties. So just quickly on that point, safe supply again, it's not opening up a convenience store with every substance available for anyone to go through. This is medically directed, safe supply program where people go through intensive back and forth with their prescriber to ensure that they are using substances safely. So that, those are the main asks. Our notes are a lot more detailed. I know we're, we're trying to speak about this rather quickly. So I, I am being fairly brief on, on all these points. But lots of the, these points again are in the background documents that we did cover. And I really do hope that we do get to hear Sandra speak to close this presentation though, because she does have a very powerful strike for us as well.
Thank you, Ian. I believe that they're trying to work on the technical issues and maybe Sandra will be able to call in, so we can at least hear her. Is that it from everyone?
That is the end of our presentation.
Excellent. Then maybe what I can do is turn next to council. I want to thank all of you for that presentation. I'm, if we can change the screen. Perhaps I can see if anyone has questions. Council, does anyone have questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. It's been my privilege to sit on the Drug and Alcohol Strategy, I believe, for the last seven years. And I am truly blown away by the collaboration and the, the bang for the buck that, that our county and Bruce County gets for, you know, really a small contribution, the way, you know, the group is able to leverage those funds and the hiring of Alison a couple of years, or three years ago, maybe more. It's certainly been instrumental in the work going forward. Certainly a shout out to Barb Fettie from our own Social Services for the, the work that Barb's done over the years as a co-chair. The work of, you know, these various organizations, you know, in collaboration with one another has really had some positive impacts. And, you know, as was pointed out, opiates and alcohol abuse within Gray and Bruce County continues to cause a lot of devastation to many individuals and families. And the work of this group has certainly been a, a ways and means to alleviate some of that. So just a, a thanks to all the work that's been done. And I hope that our county continues to, to fund this important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey. Madam CAO. You're muted.
Thank you. I wondered if any of our presenters could comment about the access to mental health and addiction support in Gray County. Is there a sense that you could provide to council with regard to capacity or wait times?
Let Clark take this one.
So we, we, we do have wait lists for, for our services. I can't give you the exact numbers offhand right now. So I say that we, our, our services are under pressure. Having said that, I do think we do and we are taking a look at how we configure our services as well. And how we can, if there's a way that we can be more effective in the deployment of our services and how we can do that. So overall, system-wide, mental health and addictions are underfunded. So we do, we do require more funding. I think everybody, everybody requires more funding, but it is true. We do. We are underfunded as a sector.
Follow up, if I may, Mr. Warden. Your funding comes to you from, primarily from the Ministry of Health, Clark?
Yes, that is, that is our primary source of funding. We also do fundraise ourselves and that is a growing source of revenue. And we do receive grants from organizations such as United Way. And we have other ministry fund us for a very specific program, such as the Attorney General and Solicitor General. So we have a, but, but the Ministry of Health through the Ontario Health now is our, our major funding.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson, you're next.
Mr. Warden, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do see that Sandra has been able to call in on phone. So I'm wondering, it's certainly up to you, if you'd like to answer the questions or hear from Sandra first.
Yeah, with the permission of council, perhaps we can turn to Sandra's person, portion of the presentation, and that may generate some questions as well, if that's okay with everyone. All right, Sandra, can you can hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you perfectly. Please go right ahead.
I apologize, Warden Hicks and County Councilors.
No worries.
Good morning. I am here today to represent the Peer Advisory Committee, which is a compassionate, invested group of individuals and family members that use our lived experience to give honest feedback on addictions and mental health programs to service providers in Gray and Bruce Counties. Alison, are you able to put the word cloud up?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. The word cloud before you and the document entitled Through the Lenses of Life.
Sandra, just hang one quick sec. We're trying to get that document up. I'll tell you when it's up because you can't see it. Alison, is that good?
Yeah, it should be on the screen now. Can you see it?
It's got Through the Lens of Life Experience, that screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Sandra, you're good to go.
Okay. The word cloud before you and the document entitled Through the Lenses of Life Experience, dependent to your council package, is a collection of real and raw reflections provided by some members of our Peer Advisory Committee, describing what it is like to live with a substance use disorder. I hope that you have or will take the opportunity to truly consider these reflections. Addiction does not discriminate. It affects all walks of life. And the person suffering from this disorder is someone's mother, father, daughter, son, sister, brother, or friend. As I speak, I know that some of you are trying to decide if I am someone with a substance use disorder or a supporting family member. The fact is, it should not matter. What matters is it is time to eliminate the stigma surrounding substance use and champion evidence-based initiatives and programs locally for the betterment and recovery of those suffering from substance use disorder. Thank you, Counselor Warden.
Very welcome, Sandra. Thank you for coming today. If we could change the screen, then I could see everyone properly again, but I do know that Counselor Robinson was next.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and I very much appreciate this, this presentation. I'm looking on page 12, at least that's, that is what appears as page 12 on the electronic agenda before me. What can council do? On item number two, assessing the need for internal harm reduction education and identifying opportunities to incorporate harm reduction into current policies and practices. And I'm wondering if our delegation individuals could speak on, on that and what that, that means and the, the action that can be taken. And again, thank you very much for the presentation that we just had.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. I can take a first stab at this question and hand it over to my colleagues. Just to provide a concrete example, some municipalities across the province have provided internal training to all staff across all programs on harm reduction. So this would include, it would be similar to how, you know, some staff might have received CPR training or first aid training, or, you know, any kind of training that would help manage a crisis, that each, each staff member would participate in training around how to identify an overdose, how to respond to an overdose. You know, some basic training on how to use a naloxone kit. And then with that training, sometimes there's some background information about some of the information that Clark shared today around what is a substance use disorder? How can you identify a substance use disorder? How can you identify someone who might be in withdrawal? And, and this would help everyone in the organization, frontline staff, managers, members of council, be able to respond to members of their community in a compassionate way that may help save a life. So that would be one example of, of what council and the county could do. I do want to give my colleagues an, an opportunity to add to that. If Ian, Sandra, or Clark have anything they'd like to add. As well as, as well as Barb and, and go ahead. Oh, Sandra, you're echoing.
I, I don't mind jumping in quick as well. I think at the very, very core, it's anti-stigma training. So education on what harm reduction is and what it is all about. A lot of times that training is all that's needed to open people's eyes and to be a lot more receptive to a lot of these other initiatives that we are talking about. A, a very, very simple example to look at is the provision of safe disposal of sharps within all municipalities. That is a, a policy that has more than just safe disposal options. What it does is allow for open dialogue with everyone from constituents, service providers, and users of substances as well. Asking the question, why are we having this here? And that question is an important question. Because really, the, the idea is very similar to any other waste disposable. We want a safe place where we can dispose of waste. Regardless of it being a sharps from someone that is diabetic or someone that is using substances. All those are the exact same, but also placing naloxone kits and, like Alison said, training on naloxone kit with all AED machines is another policy that could potentially save a life. Someone that suffers a cardiac arrest due to their prolonged diet perhaps, or their smoking habit, or, or substance use disorder, sorry, is no different than someone that is struggling with the substance use disorder that just so happens to be exposed to a toxic drug and needs life-saving procedure. Why not give naloxone while we, at the same, same point in time, we'll give CPR and artificial respiration to someone else? So those are all just various examples of what we could potentially look at in terms of embedding harm reduction strategies and policies within all of our organizations.
And I just, I just want to give Sandra a moment because I know she did try to speak earlier, but there was an echo. I know that Sandra has a unique perspective on this, given her role in her professional and personal life. Sandra, are you able to jump in? Okay, let's go to Clark and then Sandra. Oh, I just see Sandra unmuted.
Are, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I do have an interesting take on this. Having been in social services for a number of years and then switching over to paramedicine, I, and then having the experience with the Peer Advisory Committee, I find that as professionals in various agencies, it's really important to provide that stigma training because sometimes we get so wrapped up in our daily activities that we can often forget where someone else is coming from. And often it can be our one kind word that may be the catalyst to their change for the next few days or weeks.
Thank you, Sandra and, and Clark.
And so I guess I also look at this, you can look at this as employers as well. And I go back to that image of the continuum. Often when we're talking about addictions or substance use disorder, I think there's a tendency to break it down into them and us. So that those who live with a substance use disorder are different. That there's, again, it goes back to that stigma. There is a, a moral choice and, and it's, it's wrong. I think it's really important to look back at that continuum and there is no them and us. Everybody is equally at risk. And if people fall into crises in their life, they can reach for substances as a coping mechanism. So your employees can do the same thing as well. And so it is a human condition and we need to start seeing it as that and addressing it as that. So to to educate, I think just to, to, to educate people in that conceptual framework of this is a continuum. We all need to be vigilant. I think, you know, alcohol is the most accepted drug out there in society. And even with our children, we would teach them responsible drinking. And that is, that is just common practice, you know, and we watch for things. We watch. We need to do that same thing with, with all substances and we need to, need to bring the same care and compassion to it. If people are in difficulty, not, it's not a moral choice. Again, that's not why the addiction, but why the pain? What's going on? What help do you need?
Thank you for that. Counselor Robyn Robinson, you're good?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And, and not only was the, the word all very very profound in its look in terms of if you really look at all the, the words around it, but the one kind word can can be the catalyst to change. So some really profound words and I very much appreciate the response to item number two, what, what we can do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just wanted to add how very much I appreciate this presentation. I have operated a business with hundreds of employees over the years and seen some of these circumstances and have lost two very close family members to addiction. So I great appreciation for your work and certainly encourage the partnerships that you have suggested and, and the, and as much increased support as you can provide. And, and I just wondered if one of you would speak just a little bit more, it has been mentioned, but to the impact on our economy and to businesses with, you know, with, with employees suffering with the, with addictions and perhaps any supports that are available to them and and to our workforce challenges overall, because in this area, you know, we have a crisis for workforce. And we also know we have this situation with alcohol and drug abuse as a crisis. So I think there's correlation there and I just wanted to.
Well, I'll hand this over to Clark to address the question around access to, to services for employees.
Certainly, if, if as an employee you do have an EFA program, they will have, they will have some resources to draw on. And then there are local resources that you can reach out to. We have addiction counseling. There are recovery homes as well, like residential treatment as well. On a preventative basis, I guess there, again, it, it's, it's that coping mechanism. So wellness programs which, which support employees to manage stress and, and cope educational sessions around that, I think are, are important as well to, to set that, that groundwork.
Ian, did you have anything to add to that or can I move on?
Yeah, I, I definitely think you can move. Yeah, I, I definitely think you can move on. I, I do think, I'll just add one a little bit. There's lots of, for folks that maybe aren't necessarily into that face-to-face one-on-one type intervention. EAP programs like Clark mentioned are wonderful if you have access to those in your workplace. But there is a, a few other virtual options that are available within the province of Ontario to find help. Sometimes just having a smartphone and having someone at the other end is really what we, we need to look for. So there is something called the Big White Wall, which is a wonderful online peer support type network that is also supervised by mental health professionals as well, that is available for mild to moderate, you know, mental health and substance use related issues. There's, there's a lot of those potential options. And I think the biggest thing is making sure that whatever interventions we're looking at are, are what's actually needed for those individuals and not what we think they would need. That's probably the biggest thing is understanding where the individual is at and ensuring the provision of what they require, not what we necessarily think they require.
Thank you. Counselor Keating, anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Just, just to jump in, that the, the Big White Wall has been renamed to together, to go, to go there all, together all. Formerly the Big White Wall. So there was a bit of, bit of concern around the naming of that. So they've, they've cleaned that up.
Okay, Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, forgive me if this was already covered, but oddly enough, I got called away to take a call from one of my doctors while this was being presented. Do, I've been prescribed opioid for pain in the past and took back to the pharmacy what I didn't use, but not everybody will do that, of course. But does this very often begin with someone who gets a prescription? As opposed to someone who just is on the street and gets lured into getting involved with this? Do we know where it starts and would that help us to, in any way to at least attack one part of the issue?
Yeah, and I'll hand this one over to you.
Sure. Yeah, I'll jump in and Clark, feel free to add anything from more of the mental health perspective. But really, I, I think we have to rewind even further on. Really, the root cause isn't necessarily the substance. The root cause is someone's trauma or mental health issues that may be ongoing at the time that they are given a substance. As you described, you've been prescribed an opioid to manage physical pain. Opioids are also tremendous at numbing that mental and that traumatic pain that's up here in our head. And when people make that association between the numbing of the pain that they feel every single day. So imagine a headache that just will not go away regardless of what you do. And you take something and it makes it go away even for a short period of time. You're going to be drawn to that and you're going to make that association. Really, it's the resolution of the trauma prior to the introduction of the substance that is so, so critical in managing these. And the same goes for not just opioids, but alcohol for that matter. Some folks use alcohol in a very similar manner to sort of escape the pain that they feel on a regular basis. And to get out of that, you don't just take away the alcohol and manage the addiction related to the chemical. You also have to resolve the mental health and the traumatic events that have been going on in that person's life to really see a positive impact in their life. And sometimes all it takes to resolve those is building trust in order for that person to share what has happened in their life. And they can resolve a lot of times those challenges through that one-on-one interaction. So it's not only the substance, but also the person's history that really plays a huge part in, in all of this.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands. Oh, Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted more of a comment. I find with these presentations, I, I could listen to the speakers all day long because it's, it's so interesting. Two of the speakers have said, you know, I don't want to give you stat after stat after stat. I want more statistics and I want, I, I don't think you talk enough about yourselves. So I've said this at the committee level before. You know, I, I hear all of the collaboration talk and everybody working together. And, but nobody knows, or at least I don't, know what each person is doing on a daily basis. And just to give you an example, if, if Alison Govey had to meet 150 people in a week and it's Friday night at seven o'clock and she's only met 60 of them and she's had three emergencies set aside during that time. That's the kind of thing I want to know because I'd like to be able to tell my council that yes, they're underfunded and this is why, this is what they're doing. They've got this and this and this to do. It's the end of the week and they're not even close. And I don't have a good enough understanding of what everybody is doing on a daily basis. And, and I don't ask that suggesting that you're not doing anything. Everybody knows that you're overworked and underfunded. I get that. But I, I just want a better understanding. When I hear Scott Mackey say, you know, because he's on that committee, he knows what you're doing out there every day. I want to be able to, I want to be that guy and I don't have that information. So I, I just, it's just a suggestion. I don't think you talk about yourselves, what you're doing on a daily basis enough. And I'd, I'd love more information if I could. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Counselor O'Leary. Any members of the committee, why add anything to that? I, I guess I, I would love to, next perhaps hear from Madam CIO and perhaps Barb Fady. Because what we're receiving here today really is what they call a call to action. And there was a lot more in the written materials that, you know, time's limited, so you can't say absolutely everything. And so we do have a call to action. I would hate for us to have this nice presentation and, and, you know, and then move along and say, okay, next. I would love to know from either Madam CIO or Fady, what do we plan to do? What is the suggestion in terms of a next step? Because we are being asked to, with this call to action, what do we do with that?
Well, I'll start and I'll let Barb, please add her comments. She is the one that's on the, on the ground with this. I, I can't agree more with Counselor O'Leary about how council and, and, and some of us as staff even are not as aware as we could be or should be about the scope and the breadth of the challenges that are happening out there in our communities. As a primary, you know, rural Ontario has a huge, huge issue. And some of this is just starting to come to the surface. We see it in, in, in bits and pieces. But if, I think if council was interested, and I hope you are, I, I would like staff like Barb and like Kevin McNabb to continue the work that they have been doing with these folks and bring back a report that A, will address some of the ongoing communications opportunities that we might have as well as looking to some, either some adjustments to our services or to some further initiatives that we might take. So if we could have a, a resolution to that end, I think that would be something that staff would be very appreciative of.
Thank you, Barb. Do you want to add anything to that?
Good morning, Mr. Warden, County Council. I'm sorry, I was, I just lost connectivity for some reason. It's the day, I guess. But I'm back. And so I just want to acknowledge the, the good work that we're all doing together. It is really important work. It always has been. I don't ever have, I've never believed that anybody wants to be dealing with a substance use disorder and in order they want to be poor. And so currently on my caseload, we have many, many folks who are living both of those realities. And I think that piece about the, that Sandra speaks to about the stigma and the training we can provide to our people that are providing services in all of our offices and, and organizations is so very, very important. It's what we're calling a wicked problem. It's, it's so big and overwhelming. It's very difficult to see a way out. But if we chip away at it and we continue to work at this, we will find ways and means to move along that continuum. Very small changes can have a big impact with people that we're serving. And the vaccine is, is exactly that. We're meeting people where they're at, that mobile crisis unit. We see that as an opportunity for us to take services for harm reduction into communities that are not normally or can't have easy access. And that, that bodes for equity in service delivery, things that we haven't always been able to do because people don't have transportation. We also know that housing first model always works. You're not going to be able to stabilize someone unless they have a place to feel safe. That was evident of that small example that we've just experienced in Hanover as well with COVID management. So I just wanted to thank you all for participating this morning, especially our delegation. And we will continue this good work together.
If I may, Warden.
Go ahead, Clark.
I, I thank Mr. Leir for that, for that comment and, and would be really interested in coming back to council and putting together a data picture. At the, you know, for community agencies, data has, you know, been a challenge. And we are working as a sector to improve our capacity to collect, analyze and, and, you know, tell a story with data. In mental health and addictions, we have the development of the Center of Excellence for Mental Health and Addiction, who, who is, you know, dedicated to that. So I'd be happy, you know, to sit down with Alison, look at how, what we can do, the best possible data we can gather. It will, it will not be perfect, but, but if what you're looking for is a data picture, we can start building that, building that for you and, and continuing with that conversation. And just before we, before we end, I would like to thank the county for their participation and collaboration. Certainly in the handover situation, Kevin and EMS provided a great leadership and coordination with that. It was a key part to the success. So thank you for that.
So I want to thank all of you, Alison, Ian, Clark, Sandra. Very powerful presentation. I think what you're hearing from our CIO is that there will be a staff follow-up on this call to action. I know that I'm particularly, I said it at the beginning, moved by the words of your peer advisory committee members. And I want a single one out actually because it really did touch me. Somebody who described herself as a, a mother of three well-rounded children and has a husband who's a firefighter. And she writes addicts are someone's daughter, son, mother, father, family member, and friend. They are people who are spiritually sick and need some love, guidance, and hope. Does not say it all. So again, thank you, folks. I really appreciate your time. Good discussion. Adam, Clark?
Sorry, I did see Counselor Mackey's hand and then we do have a resolution drafted to, to direct staff once all the questions are answered.
Much appreciated. Counselor Mackey, I apologize, I did not see your hand.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Heather just spoke. I was going to move the resolution that our CIO was going to dictate to us. So I'd be happy to move that. And I'm just wondering, within that resolution, I believe Barb and Alison, that the budgetary crunch is not coming this year, but maybe is coming in the following year. And maybe within the resolution, you know, when council, it gets the, the particular information back and the work that's being done, you know, if a future budget could also be prepared, Barb, that would help continue the work of the drug and alcohol strategy. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mackey. Madam Clark, if you could just read that for us.
For sure. So that staff be directed to bring back a report on county and community stakeholder involvement on substance abuse disorder and supports available. And with regards to Counselor Mackey's comment, we do have a financial implication section contained in our staff report. So that's exactly where that information can be contained.
Excellent. So that is moved by Counselor Mackey. Do I have a second there? Counselor Robinson, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed to that motion? And seeing none, I'm going to say that that's carried unanimously. Thank you again, folks. Really good way to spend some time. Very important subject indeed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, council, we've been sitting for another hour. I'm going to suggest that we take, you know, a good 10, 15 minutes. Perhaps, how could we come back at maybe nine minutes? I'm going to say 11:45. And continue. Would that be okay with everyone? To take a short break? All right, see you back here at 11:45.
Okay, are we back?
Not quite quorum yet, sir.
They do have a minute.
You do have forum now, Mr. Warden.
Excellent. I think I'm going to push along and sort of timing things here. We're supposed to have another presentation at 12:30. I'm hoping that we can take a break, a proper break prior to that. So let's see how we do them. If we can get through the first item six A, then perhaps at the end of that, we may take a break and then come back for that second delegation. So we are now dealing with item five, the consent agenda council. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from that list? Items A through E. I do not see any hands. And if that's the case, then I'm going to deal with the consent agenda, agenda as it's presented. It's moved by Counselor Compass and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Anyone opposed to approval of the consent agenda? Say that that is Carrie. Thank you very much. Pat, you are now on deck. We're dealing with item six A, which is amendments to our bylaw regulating traffic and parking within the county of Gray. It's moved by Counselor Desai and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Mr. Hoy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Heather, did you?
Sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see Counselor Burley's hand.
Oh, my apologies, Counselor Burley. Go right ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Warden. I just wondered, did you want to, does Pat want to entertain questions as he goes through this technical report? Or does you want to wait until he's done?
I was going to mention that I think I'll go through them each individually and I might even kind of rearrange it to save 17B till the end. Cause I have a feeling that'll have the most questions.
Why the smile on his face? I think you nailed it. Okay.
Did you want me to share my screen, Heather, or did you?
If you could, that would be great, Pat. Okay. Thank you.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is our traffic parking bylaws, the warden said, our forty seven eighty eight dash thirteen. So what I was going to do, I will use mostly these figures for my reference points here. But I just wanted to mention before I got started that this year we've really gotten more calls about speeding than we've ever gotten before. So I think, you know, a combination of people home, you know, during the pandemic, more people are walking and cycling. There's a lot of traffic coming up here, you know, from the, from the city as, as they always do. And, and I think the, some of those AD areas are more built up areas. Speeding is a, is a, is its own epidemic, I guess, but people just generally speed. And I think more people are realizing it is around and about on the roads. So we're currently on two task forces dealing with stunt driving and speeding with MTO and a few other areas, even some like Peel. And those people are on it. So it's definitely something that all the public works folks see and we're trying to address. So within this report, you'll see that in generally, we try to stay within our policy. Um, there's some occasions that we would recommend something outside the policy. Typically, if, if reducing a speed, et cetera, meets our policy, we will endorse it. So I'll start on the chart. All of you just noticed the chart too. So there's that chart on page 21. It says whether it meets policy, yes or no, and whether it's recommended, yes or no. So there's a couple of points where it doesn't meet the policy, because if you went out there and did our, you know, our, our, our chart on whether or not it was the right speed, you would think it would have to be higher. Like this first one is an example, a gray road one shown on your screen here. So you'll see there's, there's a sixty kilometer an hour zone coming out of Wyerton that was just past the airport entrance. And then there's a sixty zone at Oxenden and around that Bruce caves entrance where there's quite a severe curve there. So it's just one of those things where it kind of zips up to eighty here in the middle. It's a very short stretch. So even though if you went out and only did, only did your evaluation as per our policy on that eighty kilometer hour zone. We just thought it would be kind of easier for everybody to just leave it at sixty. It's almost too short to leave us just a small little bump up to an eighty. So we're recommending, you'll see the orange, it's proposed sixty and it would match the area on each side of it up on grade one near Wyatt. So that's, that's our first one. If there's any questions on that, everyone can just point out to me if there's questions. The second one is, there's quite a bit of work around Kimberly. And we've been working with the community safety group. So basically there isn't, really isn't a provision in our, or in the, or in the tack manual for step downs necessarily to a lower speed. So when, when we say that this doesn't meet policy, it's basically because it goes eighty, the red, you'll see the red coming into Kimberly from the south and the north go eighty kilometers an hour posted all the way to town where it turns to fifty. So we're recommending a step down to a seventy. That's not really within our policy because there isn't a lot out there necessarily. You know, it is generally a rural section, but it is kind of the approach to town, the Bruce trails there. So we're recommending that it steps down to a seventy after coming down the hill and going north as well. And then the community safety zone at the request of the safety committee in town, moving the community safety zones out up to gray road thirty. There's quite a few tourists in the area going through town and using the Bruce trail. And just kind of a heads up to everybody that, you know, this is a built up area, that type of thing. The one thing I wanted to mention, the community safety group also wanted the town to be forty. That is something that we, we probably won't be recommending forty unless municipality comes forward and says they want their urbans to be forty. For example, as we went through with, with Dundalk, we don't want to be the only forty in town. You know, when, when Dundalk had, or Southgate recommended all Dundalk streets be forty, then we're pretty accommodating to, you know, make the county road a forty. Not that the council couldn't decide whatever they wanted, but that's just kind of the policy we go by. And the other thing to notice here is this little pink area down here in gray road thirty where people are parking basically to get access to the trail here. We've had a few complaints about it, mostly from residents that live right there. And generally, generally during COVID, we've had a lot of complaints about people parking at these conservation areas. Now, planning has noticed, we're going to try to build some parking areas and try to accommodate people more to get out there. We tried not to react too much to these because they're probably short-term pain or, you know, people are doing more with COVID. Who knows when we get back to normal, what it'll be like. But in this area, it is a curve. And it's, it's, you know, quite a sharp curve and there's some entrances there. And we just thought not having people park there would probably be better. Is there any questions about that? Okay. So on to gray road thirty, the chart is on page twenty one and the figure here is on page forty six, as you can see. Basically, there's a four-way stop here in Hutchinson's Corners where gray road thirty turns. There's some geometric deficiencies there that we felt it should be really fifty in Hutchinson's Corners. So that was our first look at it to, to make this a fifty, kind of where my cursor is going here. But then you get to the point where you're kind of out here. There's a couple subdivisions here. Again, we didn't want a real little short bump up to an eighty. We do get a lot of complaints in, you know, generally around Beaver Valley about traffic. There's a lot of people walking and walking their dogs and hiking and doing those kinds of things. So we just felt that we could carry fifty all the way through Hutchinson's Corners, all the way to the top of gray road thirty and thirty two. Going south, you'd still be an existing seventy, south on thirty two. And if you're going towards Kimberly, you, it's sixty down the hill, down Bowles left hill. So we're recommending a fifty. It's a little extended in here. It'll feel slow to people, I think. But, you know, an eighty for a few hundred meters is, is kind of uncomfortable and strange too. So we thought a fifty was suitable there. The next, so this is on page forty seven. This is in Katie. Basically, there's a hill right here on the west end of town. And we're just extending the fifty out past at a resident request and we looked at it and they're correct there. We just paved this road recently, a few weeks ago. So it makes sense for us to extend the fifty out, especially with Katie market. Once it gets going, there's a lot of cars parked in here and it makes sense for people to slow down coming over that hill. Seventeen B I'll go back to. This was gray road eighteen. So we're on to page forty nine of the, the figure and twenty two in the chart. We just had a, a request from a resident who lives in these houses here and we get them from time to time. A lot of these areas where you're coming out of an urban and it's a fifty or something. And then it goes to us, in this case, it goes to a, it's a sixty and it goes to an eighty. We get a pretty frequent requests for someone to bring the fifty or the sixty in this case, just could you bring it by my house? And then it can go to eighty and then the next guy wants to buy his house. And then, so we kind of ran this through our policy and we just feel that this, this is where the sixty should stop and it goes to eighty. So we're, we're recommending against that request of a resident. As, as eighteen is one of our busiest roads as well. Now, this is grid twenty eight in Hanover. Which is page twenty two on the chart and the photo is on page fifty one. This was a request from the town for a bit of a step down. Brerwood twenty eight, which is kind of the Hanover bypass, we call it. It was eighty all the way up to the stoplights here at the gas station at the north end of town. So the town was just hoping we could lower it to get down to a sixty and a fifty, which we felt was very reasonable. So, so we're recommending that change. Uh, grade one thirteen in the town of Blue Mountains horizontally, like this is an eighty right now coming off highway twenty six. And then it goes to a fifty as you get into Thornbury here. But this horizontally does not meet an eighty design. And knowing that this is a property owned by the town Blue Mountains is, you know, going to be developed, you know, and, and it just is such a short stretch. It doesn't meet the horizontal requirements of an eighty posted speed. We're recommending that this be a sixty zone and it's, I think it's only nine hundred meters. Just to slow people down coming into town. Not that, again, they'll drive it. They feel comfortable. But we think in this case, it's probably appropriate. And this is actually, I'll go back to seventeen B and we'll focus on the speed before I go on to the other, the other schedules. So as I said, we try to stay within policy and on, and on page twenty six of the report. You'll see that we go over the geometric criteria, our ten sets of criteria to evaluate a road for the posted speed. So in this case, the horizontal alignment and basically the way the policy is written is as, if there's a lot of risk in the speed being higher. Then, you know, we should lower the speed. So this road doesn't really have, it's very low on the risk scale. The horizontal alignment is perfectly straight. Our vertical alignment was rated as low because all the vertical curves are more than ten kilometers an hour higher than the posted speed. The stopping site distance meets standard. The lane width is low as the recommended was three point two five and they are that. The only thing is the shoulder width, the shoulders aren't really wide here. So it was, it was classified a medium risk for speed. The roadside entrances, the presentation of our residents, they live on, they actually don't live on this road. They live on West Street. But there's really not a lot of entrances. It was still considered low for entrances. There's quite a stretch here where there's hardly any entrances. And so it still ranks as low on our, on our scale because it's less than thirty or ten commercial entrances per kilometer. There's, you know, two intersections and then one at Summer Street here. So it's still considered low as, as the volume on those roads is very low. Very low on roadside hazards. The operating speed, we consider it low risk because our, our operating speed average of sixty six and it was posted sixty, this area in the light blue here. So, you know, if, if people were really exceeding it or way under it, that would kind of guide us into where we should be. It is considered low risk for accident history. There's been some accidents. Generally winter condition accidents, not, not really speed related accidents. So we did, however, look at this stretched seventy in the yellow from West Street to gray road seventeen and it's posted seventy. Now people generally go that speed there because there really isn't much there. But because of the shoulder width, we're recommending that that go to a sixty. So we thought maybe that's a compromise to slow people down coming towards where there is some residence. To make the entire road sixty. It's currently posted a sixty, then a seventy. Our residents that came to do the delegation here at council, we're hoping for a fifty. We're recommending a sixty. You'll excuse me for kind of looking down at my paper the whole time. I've, I've got a bunch of stuff going on here. Two screens. I almost need a third one.
There may be some questions now, Council Burley.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and Pat. I'm going to try to put on, keep my county council hat on, but I will be referring to myself as the mayor, George Bluffs, which I am. A great technical report, but I feel your report in this particular area seventeen B does not address the safety concerns which have been pointed out by delegations of county council and to many, many residents the last week or two that have called me. We, it's a very unique road from a summer street to the top of the hill where West Street comes out. There's a parking lot there for a walking trail, but people tend to try and park on. I've gone on this road many times in the last few days. I've set up West Street. There's a real concern when you come out of West Street for line of sight where the hill comes down. Towards West Street, you really, really have to be very careful trying to pull because of, you can't see the vehicle. You really, really have to be very careful trying to pull because of, you can't see the vehicle until the very last second. Before you can down with that hill and that's a real concern. It, this. Particular section of road from West Street to Summer Street is in a real residential area. We had Park Street coming out in there too. And I really feel that. I hope the county will look at addressing more safety concerns to do with. Traffic, vehicle, people walking and so on. And I understand that we, the county is going to put on bicycle trails coming up through there too. And I, I really think it's going to add to the whole. Congestion in that area that, yes, bicycle lanes are great, but. I'm really concerned with the safety of the residents in this particular area. And by reducing the speed from Summer Street to at least pass West Street. I really feel it's going to help solve some of the issues, but it's. Those, yes, there's very few residents coming out of there, but I have personally went into some of their driveways and looked to see their sightlines. I don't think they got great sightlines coming out of their driveways. When they come out of West Street, there's even trees that I believe are on probably the county right away. That are impacting the sightline, looking downhill and looking out the other way. Things like that, I think we really need to address. I had a resident made a very good point to me, which I've seen it done through different areas. I've even seen in George's bus. The simple cost would be to put a painted sign on the road, slow down or whatever. And it's, believe it or not, it's very effective. We're getting a lot of traffic through this area. It's maybe COVID has caused a bit more, but. I challenge any kind of council go to sit in the section of road, just sit there for ten or fifteen minutes and look at the volume of the traffic. Anything from big trucks to small vehicles to camper trailers, whoever following that road. It's a very congested road. There various times of the day. But I really wish the county would look at the safety concerns that we have along that road. And there's one more I can say right now.
I can speak to that, Mr. Warden. Yeah, those intersections and, and we went and looked at them again after the presentation, we've looked at them before. You'll find with, with intersections that meet the minimum visibility standards. If it's, if it's not, people get used to side roads far exceeding the visibility standard. All these side roads actually do meet the visibility standards, those trees at West Street are on private property, by the way, we did check those out too. But there is that general feeling of uncomfortableness. That you don't have as much time at certain intersections as you do at others. That being said, it does meet the minimum standard, we've measured it, it's not unsafe, there's no deficiency there. But there is more. Time in other places, for example, which makes you feel a little more uncomfortable. Yeah, we are paving the shoulders on that, that road as well, that's, that's started now for construction. And, and I agree with you, like I, there is, there's four to five thousand cars a day going through there, so it's very, very busy. There is people, I've been driving that road for eighteen years, every day. And there is walkers and, and hikers and that type of thing on it. That being said. I'd like people to slow down, we'd all like people to slow down. I just don't feel changing it to fifty is necessarily going to accomplish that. Because our concern is, all you're doing is creating bigger speed differentials. You know, because you have the person that will go forty five and then you have the person. Still going to go seventy five, that's my concern.
Anything else, Council Burley?
Yes, I, I, I understand your way of thinking, Pat, as a director of transportation for the county. I understand that and I do know you travel that road practically every single day. But I still wish the county would take another look at the safety concerns along the road itself. By paving the shoulders and so on, yes, it's probably going to help, but it's still not going to solve the problems of safety concerns. And I've talked to many, many residents through that area. And even from out of the area, they all have the same concerns and yes. Reducing speed limits is not necessarily going to solve the problem of speeding. But I'm just, I have a real concern with the safety concerns on the county side. And even on the George and Bus side. Is there something we can do with better signage indicating? For instance, the parking lot where the trail is on top of the hill, across some signs or something of West Street. Just some other avenues we can take just to make sure we've addressed all the safety concerns we possibly can. And that's my big concern and. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Councilor Potter.
Thank you, and I think along the same lines as Council Burley. We're seeing a lot of that extra traffic now too, and, and I just recently received. Comment from a local resident representing several residents who live around the area of the intersection of Gray Roads thirteen and forty. About the amount of traffic, how much it's grown. Not so much that they understand that, but the speeds. And so I see that we are, we have controls in place. As you get into Clarksburg, but. What they were asking for, and I will forward this to Pat later on. Is, is to move that back to south of Gray Road thirteen on, or sorry. On Gray Road thirteen, south of Gray Road forty instead of north. In other words, as you approach that intersection to start reducing the speed there because. People are keeping up the speed as they go into the village of Clarksburg, even though there are two sharp bends there. Also a request that once we get into the village of Clarksburg for a flashing yellow light. At the intersection of Clark Street. So these generally come under the same heading that Council Burley was talking about is that. We're seeing more and more and more traffic in some of these areas. And I think as a county council, our first concern has to be safety. And the safety of our residents, the safety of the traveling public and the visitors to this area. No one will thank us. For the accidents that take place, they will thank us for the lives we save and the people whose, whose lives are not disrupted. So. Anything we can do. That will help protect the public when they're on our roads will be, will be good. So we're hearing, you know, these are all specifics, but we're hearing it under the general nature of time for. Us to look at the way our area is growing and realize that it's time to slow things down a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Potter. Council Sampson, you're next.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Couple of questions, one, is, are there a list of considerations that the county has? Has looked at that didn't make this list and, and are there ways in which? This next list can have some new candidates added to it because I think Council Potter just spoke of a couple. There are a couple more that popped up from concerned citizens that I've had to deal with and meet with. Call apart bend on highway two is a rather dangerous bend. That should be dealt with as far as speed is concerned. But it leads me into my next question, which I think is on a number of people's minds. What traffic calming measures are we employing, employing across the county or will we deploy across the county? To help people stay within the limits. That were, that are, they are set or we are now setting. And are we looking at things like the electronic speed flashing signs that are now being deployed? In a number of other neighboring counties. And even MTO is looking at, as I gather. To encourage drivers to stay within the limit as opposed to. Drive with, at whatever limit they feel is, is safe as opposed to what the legal limit is. I think we should take a look at that. I know for me, it certainly makes a difference when I see the flashing sign that says I'm going eighty and it's a sixty K zone. And I adjust my speed, I'm just wondering whether or not that's. A helpful tool we can use across the county and some of these. Areas where, as Council Potter spoke to, we need to take a look at the safety impact and, and. And how we need to do things to help make sure our community is safe.
Okay, Pat.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I guess I'll handle those questions a little bit here. The, the additional traffic calming, we, we did have a traffic calming pilot. We were going to install it in Kimberly and Hanover. The, the, the kind of. Signs in the middle of the road on the lane and then there'd be one on each edge line. A lot of pushback from the OFA as most of these problems are hamlet related problems. All the, you know, the OFA said, well, the farm equipment, they do fold down, those, those. Barricades, they're not really barricades, but, you know, signs. The problem is, is the, the OFA was really against it and some trucks were against it. And the only other thing is they really take a beating. We've been going through a bunch of them in Hanover. I don't know if people, and, and Bruce County had mentioned this to us too, you don't know if people run over them for fun. Or if people aren't looking and they're on their phone and they're just barreling through them. But we've had some that only lasted, you know, less than a week. The other thing, the electronic signs, we already have one in Kimberly, the flashing sign that that, that Gray Highlands put up. People do get desensitized, it seems like every traffic calming measure, people get desensitized to. And, and I knew, I know we do have a report to bring forward talking about traffic cameras as well and in community safety zones and school zones, but. And, and just the only other thing I mentioned, you know, I, I don't want to paint it like. We're not concerned about safety, that is our number one concern. But then you look at, at certain things, like you look at the highway twenty six, right? MTO made it fifty for a year as a pilot program. They had the first head on collision they've ever had. In the last five years, was that because someone got impatient? Was it good that it was fifty to save a life that it wasn't eighty? Or is it just a coincidence that it got, you know, that there was a head on when they changed it to fifty? Without any real traffic data to do that. And then the, the, the police in that area really weren't happy with the fifty, there was huge queues, there was impatient drivers, so. We all want safety and maybe making a fifty will work great. Maybe as a society, if every road was thirty over the course of fifty years, maybe we'd actually figure out we don't need to go that fast and it's only going to save us two minutes. Maybe it's, maybe it's equated to seat belts and drinking and driving, which, you know, it took, it is still taking. Decades to get people to buy into, but it's definitely better than it used to be, so. I don't feel like I'm here to argue about whether it should stay a sixty, that's what our policy says. If you want to try a fifty and see if it makes an impact and we end up changing it back. It's not the end of the world either, unless it results in an accident, of course, but. You know, that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. And I just want to say a, a thank you to Pat, I know speeding is a. It's a, it's a hot button issue and, and I always admire, tra- tra- transportation is a hot button issue and I always admire. The care and the, the effort that Pat puts into explaining the technical details of it to, to members of council. I also do appreciate the, the traffic calming efforts that, that are being proposed that have taken place already. One of the, and, and this is going back to the last term of council, at which point I was on a county council, but it was a discussion that was added. At the lower tier at the municipality of Gray Highlands Council. Where one of the oppositions to having. The flashing signs with the, with the speed limit showing on, or not the speed limit, but the, your speed showing on there. Was that many people take that as a, what's the highest score I can get? And it becomes a bit of a game for them and it's unfortunate, but it, it is true. There's data to show that that has happened in some cases. My question and perhaps comment at this point, Warden, is that. One way to ensure that people travel the speed limit through a certain area. Is to have the automatic speeding enforcement units. Are they expensive? Yes, they are. But we can't have safety and cost savings at the same time. If we had to pick one, which one are we picking? We're noticing that we're not getting cost savings with, with the. The traffic calming measures where. As, as Director Hoard suggested, we're not sure if people are running into them on accident or on purpose, but we're not getting. Traffic coming through that and. I doubt we're getting traffic safety from that if they're running into these, these pylons. So maybe we need to spend more money and get speeding enforcement, which is automatic, there is no discretion involved. There is no emotions involved. You're going at a certain speed, you've got to take it because you went above the set speed limit. So I know, I know that there is. Well, the last time I brought it up, I know Director Hoard suggested that, you know, the, the downside of it was that if. People don't speed, we don't have a way to pay for those units. What I'm saying to county council is. That's a gamble perhaps, but if people aren't speeding, it does mean that we have safer roads and we've just spent money. To provide a safer road, which I don't think is a bad investment. I wouldn't call that an expense, I would perhaps call that an investment, so. I would like for county council to revisit that issue of having speeding, the, the speed enforcement units and. Perhaps looking and perhaps directing staff to look into units that are mobile so that they can be moved to problem area to problem area. Because seventeen B, once that issue or once the speeding on that road is solved, that it doesn't solve all our speeding issues. We, we can still have speeding issues in other, other jurisdictions, other areas, so. If we have a mobile unit, we can move that around and maybe we need to spend some money on that and, and. Ensure that we can have a safer road. Thank you, thank you for the time, Warden.
Pat, any comments?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden, yeah, I think it's September is we're going to bring that, that report back about the cameras. And I, and I, and I know what, what Council Desai is saying, it's, it's kind of, you know, hand in hand with the Vision Zero initiative, which we haven't fully adopted yet. We're, we're still, most municipalities in North America are still. Kind of like things meet the standard, right? Whereas Vision Zero, the theory is, you know, people are going to make mistakes. So, you know, when, sometimes we have someone run a stop sign and there's a T bone, just a catastrophic accident. Vision Zero basically is taking the stance that you know someone's going to make a mistake. So design your roads that a mistake isn't catastrophic. You know, more roundabouts. You know, chicanes and those kinds of things just to. Force people to slow down because you know they're going to run a sign at some point. And there was a, a presentation of good roads where. I think it was in Northern Sweden or something, there was, there was a road with a lot of head on collisions, like three or four head on collisions a year. So they ended up putting, there's a group that wants to do the same in Northern Ontario on, on highway eleven. So they ended up doing like two kilometer sections, there'd be. There'd be two lanes going one way and one coming the other with guide rail down the middle, you basically couldn't pass. And then the next section would be two kilometers the other way, or two lanes the other way and one kilometer, so just alternating passing lanes. You only ever had to go two kilometers without having a chance to pass somebody. Assuming you can get by the phenomenon of everybody speeding up when they can be passed, right? Like that, that's still, that seems to happen a lot for some unknown reason that no one can explain to me, but. But that is, as Council Desai said, that is a lot of money, right? So, but then again, maybe it's a culture change. So, I mean, I, I think I'm here to work with you and we're going to try to figure out. And make, you know, how, how to, how to reduce speed, which obviously reduces the severity of accidents. It's just the, the thing that worries me is the, the variability of speeds. Someone going forty and someone coming up on them going seventy is a big difference than everybody going sixty five, say. So that's, I'm not going to go too much further on that.
Okay, so thank you, Pat. We had talked about going through each area and entertaining questions as you move through each area.
Mr. Warden, yes. I, I apologize, but I do see that. Council O'Leary has, has a question that he noted in the chat.
Yes, my apologies, he did put something in the chat. Council O'Leary, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I thought you were ignoring me.
My apologies.
Pat, I'm, I'm just, I, I think I heard you say when you're discussing with Council Burley. That all you would get moving it to fifty kilometers an hour is a bigger speed differential. And I think that's exactly what they need. I mean, I didn't hear anyone complaining about. The volume of traffic on seventeen B. It's, it's the people that are racing to, to beat the traffic that's going on the highway. So if it drops to fifty kilometers an hour, I think you eliminate the people that are trying to race around. I, I think that it keeps those people on the highway. You also mentioned the, the narrow shoulders and if there's bike lanes going in, I think that's even worse. I went back after our, our last discussion when this was at council. And spoke to my brother because he lived for years right at the bottom of that hill. And so this is coming from someone that's there every day and he said that should have been fifty kilometers an hour twenty years ago. Because of the speed of drivers going by. And the last point I want to make, when you're speaking about Gray Road thirteen. And the last point I want to make, when you're speaking about Gray Road thirteen. You're talking about working with the Community Safety Group. And you said you weren't dropping it to forty kilometers an hour unless the municipality asked for it. And it's my understanding that Georgian Bluffs Council unanimously asked for this speed limit to be dropped to fifty. I'm wondering if Counselor Burley could confirm that, but. I, I just, I, I'm totally shocked that, that this is not being dropped to fifty and. If, if that was a motion, I would certainly support it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Burley?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Not to delay the, or discussing this particular seventeen B. I'm still a firm believer. Being very familiar with road that the speed limit should be dropped from Summer Street to up past West Street to fifty. And then from West Street to six and ten highway, drop to sixty. I really feel it would really solve a lot of concerns and safety issues that I have and a lot of residents that there do have. And I say I've talked to many people I know that come, for instance, up Park Street early in the morning. There's not a car to be seen anywhere. Talked to somebody around ten or eleven o'clock in the morning. It's a completely different road altogether. And I, I, I really would like to not be in the decision of county council, but you find that. We have some serious accidents that might happen when the bike lanes are put in place. Because we didn't really address our safety concerns. It's a real concern of mine and, Mr. Warden. With your permission, I would like to put a motion forward that. That we would drop the speed limit to fifty from Summer Street to West Street. And. The very least do that and then maybe sixty from Summer Street to the highway.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to suggest with the aid of Madam Clerk. That perhaps we entertain that and any other amendments at the end of the presentation.
Yes, please.
And so we can at least get through the full report. And then I'll invite people and I'm well aware that you'll want to make an amending motion. Would that be okay with you, Counselor Burley?
Definitely.
Okay. Counselors Desai and Carlton, Desai first.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I, I apologize if I lose my train of thought. My fiance is cooking lunch. It smells really good. So I'm a bit distracted, but the two questions that I have is we're talking about changing speed limit. Realistically, the. Driving habits will only change if there is enforcement on speeding limits, on, on, on the new speed limits. I can't remember if it was Director Hoyer or predecessor of this who once mentioned about speeding. Is that people will drive at the speed that the road allows them to drive at. Meaning that the engineering of the road, if you have a narrower road, people will drive slower because it seems. A, a smaller road and, and they feel a bit more constricted in that, in that regard. Whereas if it was a wider road, people would be naturally predisposed to drive a bit faster. So road design plays a big, big part in what speed people drive at. For example, in Flesherton. South of the, south of the high, sorry, north of the high school. Was a speeding issue at a time when the sidewalks weren't there. With the sidewalks coming in and the perception that the road was now narrower. Speeding hasn't been as big of an issue from my understanding as it once was. So again, road design is an important element of it. If we do for, and, and I'm going to use the hypothetical amendment that Counselor Burley has suggested, if we do change that. Do we have any jurisdiction as a body to perhaps require increased enforcement? Along that section, along the sections where we're asking for the speed limit to be changed. Even though the policy doesn't require that speed limit to be changed. Because the policy takes into account the road design and the engineering around that. And if the engineering is going to allow the driver to go at. Seventy kilometers an hour, then. And we're forcing them to go less than that, then we should have enforcement at least for a limited time so that. Drivers are forced to go at that fifty kilometers an hour through, through the ticketing process. Now, thank you, Warden Hicks.
Counselor Desai, I'm hearing from staff that we are going to be getting a report on traffic calming measures and. Even road design. So perhaps that's something better addressed at that time or even a further debate about that. When we deal with the amendment, because you were couching that suggestion in the amendment proposed by Counselor Burley.
I always know I was a man ahead of my times.
Pat, you want to add anything to that?
I, I, I would just say that enforcement is, is. For, for the member municipalities that have their police boards and, and that type of thing. So. We really don't have any control over enforcement other than we do regularly report to the, the enforcement agencies about. Problem areas.
Okay. I'm anxious to move things along. See Counselor Carlton and then Counselor Potter and then maybe we can move back to the staff presentation. Counselor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd just like to speak to a couple of the comments that Mr. Hoy made. One of them being about the comfort level of drivers. And I think on that road, when you look at all of the streets that come out onto Gray Road seventeen B. They all come out onto it at an angle. They don't come straight at it. So I, and on West Street, you're not only coming at seventeen B on an angle. Now you're trying to look around and down a hill. And so your sightline is, you're pulling out onto the road to be able to see down that hill. The other comment was that there are not a lot of driveways on seventeen B and I would agree there. But I think it's the layout of West Street and Park Street, the number of driveways there. And their only access getting into town is down seventeen B. So that adds to the traffic. So while those driveways aren't on seventeen B, there's certainly, it's their only way into town. Sort of heading on out and going in twenty-fourth street, which is the long way. They're not going to do that. So just a couple of comments there about. I drive that road a lot, so I see a lot of this all the time. As well as the Bruce Trail coming out onto it and Gray Sawbelle and the hikers and walkers. So there's a lot on that road all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carlton. Counselor Potter?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Warden. And through you, I, I just wondered if I would. Be in, in full support of Counselor Burley's earlier motion. If we could add that, that staff review the other issues raised. As well as what Counselor Burley already brought up regarding. The one road. And forgive me, my memory is slipping at the moment, but. There were issues raised by myself, by Counselor Sampson, Counselor Carlton. Counselor O'Leary and a few others regarding specific issues. And I wonder if, if we could ask Pat and his department to review those. And report back during the fall. If we could add that to the motion, I would be prepared to, to certainly support it and second it if necessary. Thank you.
So just to be clear, we're not on the motion as yet.
No, I, I, I do understand that. I just, if it comes up.
Yeah. So why don't we wait until that does come up? And I, I, I hear you loud and clear, but it's probably best dealt with when the motion is, is placed. Pat, I'd like you to get back to your report if you could, please.
Yeah, I just want to briefly, I'll start that, but I just want to answer Counselor Potter's question. So that's kind of what we started a few. Probably a year and a half ago or whatever that all these requests to come in from residents. They end up working their way into this report, whether we turn them, you know, recommend against them or not. Because in the past, we found that. We would get a complaint from resident, we'd run it through our policy. You know, we'd say, oh, the policy is sixty and that's where it's going to stay and. They didn't seem to have a lot of enjoyment out of the fact that it never went anywhere. No, they didn't feel like anybody. Was addressing their complaint, even though we did. Any, any complaint we get, like the ones you just mentioned, Counselor Potter, we'll start, we'll squeeze it into our next. Forty-seven eighty-eight bylaw update report. So I'll just go back to our, oh, sorry, I gotta go back. I'll just finish these last two, three schedules here. So Schedule O is the. Community or school zone speeding. There's just the Derby School is not there anymore, so there doesn't need to be a school zone. And then in, in Holstein, the whole, the whole. Community is forty, so we didn't need a, a flashing forty during school hours. Kimberly, again, this is just Schedule P, which is extending the, as, as we showed on the figure, this is just extending the community safety zone. And Schedule U is no parking. So there was a request. Outside of Sinclair Auctions on Gray Road Four. That we make that no parking. And we had talked to Mr. Sinclair and he does two or three sales a year. And he does have parking on site. I'm assuming it fills up over time. There it's not enough or something. But again, with economic development, we didn't really want to, you know, impact his business too negatively. We've never noticed that it was a large safety concern. The auctions are rare. So we're recommending against that right now, but again, that's an area that we're going to continue to monitor. And I think the last. Oh, the no parking, of course, in Gray Road Thirty is the last one, which I already discussed. The only thing I haven't discussed is the, and it was big in the presentation for the seventeen B delegation. About ways and. And, and basically the. You know, your GPS directing people to go through seventeen B. So Ways has kind of told us they, they can't put a stop on people going somewhere or their, their algorithm directing people somewhere. And I, I do think that road, although the delegation seemed to think it was, you know. The people's GPS directed them how to get to Sawbelle and stuff. That road is pretty heavy with people just taking the shortcut in town that know about it. Because I know lots of times, you know, on a Friday night of a long weekend, I'm taking that road to get home. And all the other people are out on the highway lined up from. You know, the old drive-in all the way to Springmount and line up from Springmount all the way south of the Georgian Bluffs. Hall or headquarters. So. I do think really seventeen B is a lot of local traffic. And people, as Counselor Larry mentioned again, people are using it to try to shave a minute and a half or two minutes off. Their trip. So that's what happened. That seems to be its major use.
Thank you, sir. Are you now finished?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Counselor McQueen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just going back to the Kimberly area and just relooking at that recommendation, sir. I know that there has been a number of years of issues with regard to speeding through Kimberly and I know that we have. Resisted going to below the fifty kilometers and we had talked about. The. Traffic calming and, and the issues that you talked about with OFA. I think it's at this time and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm going to make this request to county council and. I would suggest probably my deputy mayor would support me on this as well as, is that. To reduce it to forty, I think there's an issue that the end of issue that it happens in Kimberly, it's on a downward slope. And maybe you don't have the tendency to have people as much speeding up the hill, but it has a tendency now. Now I know you're reducing. Definitely reducing that speed earlier. But I think it's, you know, I know that up the road through. Eugenia has been, you know, it's been at forty. We've started to do other areas and I guess. I will say, and, and probably similar to the representatives of Georgian Bluffs and, and others, you know. We are elected to make these decisions. We probably have a better understanding of the residents and, and the concerns of our local municipalities and. You know, I would. Wish, you know, respectfully submit that we make a change to the report that we reduce the. The Kimberly area in the, right in the hamlet itself from fifty to forty. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
I would support that if we're doing amendments at this point.
So that, that's where I'm going. Madam Clerk. Am I okay to deal with amendments at this point?
Yes, you are, sir. We've been sort of drafting them on the side here while the conversations are going on.
Okay. So very good. So why don't we deal with the amendment brought by Counselor McQueen? With respect to Gray Road thirteen in Kimberly. So it's moved by Counselor McQueen. And seconded by Counselor Desai. And if I heard him correctly, that green zone that we see in the middle, the existing fifty. Being reduced to forty kilometers per hour. Have I got it right?
That's correct. At least from my perspective, I guess. Pat, is any comments to that?
So now we'll open it up for discussion. Paul, you were asking Pat for input on that?
Yeah, just to be as any other comments, but that was a section of the area. And I know, Mr. Warden, I know that. We talked about holding off to try the, the traffic calming and I think. Counselor Desai does make a good point where in Flesherton, we, we reduced the width and, and the sidewalks that did help slow. But I know when things narrow, that does help. But it just seems to be a continuation and I know we had a delegation to us, was it last council or council before? With, with concerns and, but we still want to move traffic through there. It's just a recognition of slowing things down and, and. There is the issue about sidewalks and where people have to walk sort of on the edge of the road. And I know we're doing some, some sidewalks. Outside there, but generally if, especially in the winter time and they, they've got snowbanks and stuff like that, it is, just seems to be a busy road. So yes, thank you, Mr. Ward.
Pat, do you want to add anything to that or?
Yeah, just, just the one thing I, I would like to, to discuss this with our engineering guys a little more that if it's going to forty. Maybe, you know, rather than an eighty, seventy, forty step down, maybe it's an eighty, sixty, forty then at that point. I have to look into the geometric design manual to see exactly what the policies are on that, but. That'd be something we could, we could update for the, when the bylaw comes. Whether it should be, that yellow area should be, you know, seventy to forty is quite a step down as well if it's going seventy to forty, right? So. Maybe that should be a sixty then if, if we're determined to get, you know, the, the urban area to forty. But I would like to, to talk to engineering a little more about that.
So how would I, how would we word that motion that that could, if that's the direction, but it would come back in the sense of the blending? Is that, I think I hear the blending of.
Yeah, we'd have to just change the, the schedule N. Schedule N has a lot of, that's the one thing I kind of glossed over. Schedule N has a lot of changes just based on descriptions and stuff, location, making the sign. As posted in the bylaw, meet the field location. So we would go back and instead of it saying seventy in that area, we would change it to sixty. So. We could probably do that as a, as a pretty small item when the bylaw comes back, I think. I don't know. I don't know what you'd want in your motion now necessarily, but. As far as a transition zone or whatever, whatever you want to call it, I don't, I'm not sure.
Maybe the wording, Mr. Warden, would be in the green zone, reduce it to forty. And the transitional zones be adjusted according, according to the. Is there some kind of a engineering suggestion that would blend those to that forty, like however that wording needs to be?
I wonder, Mr. Warden, if we could just include it as a progressive step down. I think that's sort of what Pat has alluded to in earlier conversations and then staff could bring that. Through with the bylaw, certainly for council's consideration still.
But nevertheless, Madam Clerk, we still have to deal with the motion, which is that that green area be dealt, be brought down to forty. And perhaps the addition to that motion could be with a staff recommendation about the two. I guess, what do you call them? What's the right word for that?
And a, and a review, a staff review of progressive speeds within the village of Kimberly.
Approaching zones, right?
Approaching zones, yeah.
Does that sound reasonably enough for you, Deputy Warden?
Yep, long as that gives a clear direction of what we're trying, intending here to do and, and I, I certainly agree. It doesn't make sense to go. You know, one speed and all of a sudden drop thirty kilometers like that. Doesn't, it makes sense. It makes really good sense, for sure.
So just to be clear, the amendment that's being proposed is that that green area be reduced from the recommended. Excuse me, staff are proposing fifty, that it be reduced to forty. And in addition, that the, the motion is also that staff bring back recommendations about those two approaching zones. That's what we're voting on. And I see Counselor Potter has a question about this.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to follow up on my earlier one and are you?
Just very quickly, I just wanted to follow up on my earlier one, and are you, Pat, I don't envy you this at all. But, uh, just to make, to see if whether I could follow up, and, uh, the items that were captured earlier, because I think we all agree with most of the, uh, list in the report, but if we could capture these other items for review, I'm not expecting us to make a decision on them today, but uh, if they could be reviewed again with, in, in light of what's been raised today.
Pat, would it be fair to say that you've taken note of those, uh, questions, and that will be addressed in the upcoming, uh, staff report?
Sure, yep.
Are you satisfied with that, Counselor Potter? Okay, see you nodding your head. All right, so back, uh, I don't see any other hands, so we're about to vote on the amendment with respect to Gray Road Thirteen uh, in Kimberly, and the motion essentially is, uh, that the green area be reduced to forty, and that staff bring back some recommendations with respect to two approaching zones, north and south of that green section. So I will call the question, is there anyone opposed, uh, to that motion? Uh, I can't see, uh, hands, Madam, uh, Clerk.
Can you stop sharing your screen?
Yep.
For just a second? Thank you.
Okay, so we're calling the question, I'm looking to see if there's anyone opposed to that motion by, uh, Counselor McQueen and seconded by Counselor Desai. Uh, seeing none, I'm gonna say that that is carried. Okay, uh, Counselor Burley, I think I'll turn to you next, because you have a proposed, uh, amendment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, uh, I would like to propose that, uh, the speed limit be reduced to fifty from Summer Street to up to the top of the hill at West Street, and then from West Street to the highway, reduced to sixty. We in Georgian Bus appreciate the county making this road nice with page holders and so on, but I have real concerns with, uh, putting, uh, these page holders on, and all my other concerns I had with, uh, some traffic and safety concerns, and, and that's my motion.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I'm gonna call for a second or in a second, but I wonder, Pat, if you could please bring up your screen again, uh, and put it on that Gray Road Seventeen B. Thank you, make it a little bit bigger. Excellent. Now, Counselor Burley, a- as you are talking about the proposed change that you want, I wonder, Pat, if you might just with your, uh, point, yes. Um, tell us what he's talking about here. So.
So, yeah.
Counselor Burley, go ahead.
Do you want me to do it, or do you want the Director of Transit?
Or Pat's got it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can do it, yeah, so, uh, so the motion would be for this, uh, light blue section here to be fifty. And for this yellow, which he's got right to the highway, which, uh, kind of makes sense as well, because it's pretty short. Um, that this would be sixty, I guess, from probably highways, probably rather than this Gray Road Seventeen, as I think might be in the chart. Well, I guess it's a different road, right? Uh, this is actually seventeen, so when you say right to the highway, um, I'm not sure what the bylaw says about what this stretch is, to be honest with you. So I'm just not sure how to word that. I guess it's seventeen B from West Street to Gray Road Seventeen, and Gray Road Seventeen from seventeen B to Highway Six. Two sixty kilometers an hour, that would be really what the, what you're looking for.
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and that's seconded by Counselor Keveney. Or was it Carlton? I can't remember which one.
I think it was Counselor Carlton.
Counselor Carlton, my apologies. It's still in that tall, even if Carlton.
I do see Counselor Burley.
Counselor Burley, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Warden, I'm requesting record a vote, and I'd like to see the full screen, please.
Yeah, is there any other, um, discussion or comments on the, uh, amendments before we call the vote? So, none, okay, we are ready. Madam Clerk, where are your hands?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden, so we are just voting on the amendment for the two changes outlined by Counselor Burley and Mr. Hoy. Um, I will note, uh, Mr. Warden, that Counselor Millen has left the meeting. Okay, uh, Counselor Mackey.
Can I, sorry, sorry.
Yes.
Can I, can I have the motion repeated for clarity, please?
Okay.
Go back to the screen.
If, if, uh, with some clear, with a little bit of, um, indulgence, um, that this be added to the second clause, with the exception, uh, rates of speed on Gray Road Seventeen B. From West Street to Summer Street, be posted at fifty kilometers an hour. The rate of speed on Gray Road Seventeen B from West Street to Gray Road Seventeen be posted at sixty kilometers an hour, and the rate of speed from seven, Gray Road Seventeen to Seventeen, from Seventeen B to Highway Six be posted to sixty kilometers an hour.
Your clarity, uh, Counselor Desai?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Now, Clerk, we're back in your hands for the vote.
Thank you. Counselor Mackey.
In favor?
Counselor Gamble.
In favor?
Counselor Burley?
In favor?
Counselor Carlton?
In favor?
Counselor McQueen?
In favor?
Counselor Desai?
In favor?
Counselor Patterson?
In favor?
Warden Hicks?
In favor?
Counselor Clumpus?
Favor?
Counselor Keveney?
In favor?
Counselor Body is not with us. Counselor O'Leary?
In favor?
Counselor Woodbury?
Favor?
Counselor Millen has left. Uh, Counselor Sampson?
In favor?
Counselor Potter?
In favor?
Counselor Robinson?
In favor?
And Counselor Hutchinson?
Yeah, in favor?
Motion is carried seventy-nine to zero.
Thank you very much. So, Council, uh, any other, uh, amendments to deal with, or can we go to the main, uh, motion now? One, once, twice, I do not see any hands, so I'm ready to call the question on the main motion now, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Um, are the original mover and seconder okay with moving the main motion now as amended?
Yeah, that's a good, I see nodding of heads.
I see, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I'll call the question on the main motion now as amended, is there anyone opposed? Seeing no hands, I'm gonna say that that is carried. All right, so here we are now, uh, I'm going to suggest, uh, we have, uh, made arrangements for our second delegation to be delayed to, uh, one fifteen. It doesn't give us, uh, a lot, a lot of time, especially if you're as slow an eater as I am. I'm gonna suggest that we take a break and come back at one fifteen and continue with the agenda at that time. Anyone have anything to say about that, or are we good? All right, so we'll see you all at one fifteen. Cheers.
How are we doing?
We still need a few more.
I'm not the only slow eater.
Olivia, can you bring us back to full screen, please?
We're getting there. I think we have quorum.
Yes, we do.
So a few seconds. Okay, I think we'll get us started. Olivia, are we good to go?
You are good to go.
Thank you very much. So council, welcome back. Hope you had a little get a little something into your bellies. We're going to go back to our second delegation from Hampson dealing with the growth management study. It's Stefan and Stefan, I am going to butcher your name, so maybe I better not even try. Is it Kurshtenowicz?
It is not Warden, but that's certainly very, very close.
I shouldn't have even tried.
Thank you for thank you for trying.
Anyways, Stefan, we have your materials and you've got the floor.
Thank you very much, Warden, and I'm going to just share my screen here if you bear with me. Can everyone see that?
We can, yes.
Great, thank you. Just change this to there. Okay, well, thank you once again, Warden. And as you mentioned, my name is Stefan Kretinovic. I work for Hampson Consulting. And really, the purpose of my presentation to you and council today is to present to you the results of the work that we were retained to do to revise the county's growth forecasts as part of the update to its growth management strategy and in turn, the county official plan. And it concludes many months of work in partnership with your staff and staff and external consultants retained by the area municipalities in the county. I'm going to speak very briefly about the demographic trends that serve as the basis for the forecasts. And then I will present you the forecast results. And they'll be presented as results for the county as a whole, as well as separate forecasts for each of the area municipalities. And we'll be looking at population, households, housing units by unit type, and jobs and jobs by land use type as well. First, want to just talk a little bit about population growth trends in the county. I'm sure members of council will be aware that, you know, in the last five years, the counties experienced a significant increase in population growth. It was actually started almost around the exact time of the 2016 census. And the change was very rapid and quite immediate. And there are several reasons for this happening. The first is that there are sort of demographic forces at play, very broad demographic forces, which are bringing millennial, the millennials into the housing market. And while baby boomers, the peak baby boom remains sort of 60 years old and very active in the housing market. But there are also shifts in the housing pattern for baby boomers as well. The second factor is, of course, that pressure on the housing market has increased affordability issues in the Greater Toronto Area and its hinterland, which has put pressure on housing markets a bit further afield. And this is bringing parts of gray into the sort of the orbit of the broader regional housing market. parts of Gray into the sort of the orbit of the, the broader regional housing market, particularly in areas like Dundalk in, in Southgate. And at the same time, you know, there's the ongoing development of the Lakeshore communities in the county, Miford, Town of the Blue Mountains, which continue to be the, the location for a lot of development and growth. And then, of course, we have COVID, which in many respects has accelerated some of these, these trends that, that were occurring before COVID descended on us. But may have accelerated, for example, things like the early retirement of some baby boomers, their desire to convert a second home into a permanently occupied dwelling. And, you know, the desire by some people to start what was a temporary working, work at home experiment and convert that into a more permanent lifestyle. So all, all that being said, there are strong indications for sustained high growth in the future in the county and certainly in the near term. If you look at the table, the, the top table on the right, you can see since 2016, we've had around about 1.4% population growth per annum overall in the county. That compares to 0.3% per annum between 2011 and 2016. And population decline between 2006 and 2011. So it's a, it's a, it's quite a change. And if you look at the bottom chart, you can see that our expectations for growth in the 2018 growth management strategy, which were based, which did not have the benefit in some respects of the 2016 census, have been far exceeded over the last five years. And, and indeed, the, the gap has widened during the COVID period, if anything. The other thing to point out to, to council is that this is not a phenomenon that has been unique to Gray. And so we've seen very high population growth in jurisdictions at the edges of the Greater Golden Horseshoe ever since 2016, though not always for the same reasons. So there are certainly very particular, there's a particular dynamic that's, that's occurring in Gray. But the, 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 the growth itself is, is, is certainly a feature of, of the landscape at the fringe of the Greater Golden Horseshoe. The other thing to point out is that the recent population growth is not just in one location. It's, it's evident throughout the county. So this, this bar chart here shows for the three census periods leading up to today. So the, the green is the 2006 to 11 census period. And, and that was a period of population decline or stability in some places, with the exception of Hanover in the middle, where you can see where they, they had population growth in the town there. And then we have the gold portions of the bar, which represent the sort of recovery from the 08, 09 recession, which was quite slow in many places of the province, including Gray, where we have some population growth starting, starting to occur, except in Miford. And then, and Owen Sound. And then in the red, we have the, the rapid growth that I've just been describing, except in Owen Sound. And it's not to say that there isn't development activity in Owen Sound, there certainly is, but it's offset by a much older and an aging population there. And so, you know, Town of the Blue Mountains, the fastest growing municipality has been for some time. But as I say, the Lakeshore municipalities and Georgian Bluffs and Miford proportionately rapid growth in the last five years. Southgate, very rapid growth in the last few years. And Hanover, indeed, very steady growth over the last 15 years. So this gives you the, the, the population outlook for the county as a whole. As I mentioned, the new forecasts that are here exceed the previous 2018 forecasts. So the population is anticipated to grow from 103,000 people today to 127,000 by 2046. This represents higher growth than are included in the most recent Ministry of Finance projections from 2020 of 121,400 people. And that's because in part of the very, of the opportunities that exist in the development pipeline in the, in the very near term. You'll see also, however, that the, 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 the growth of the population on a countywide basis slows throughout the period to 2046. And that's because, you know, you are still not immune from the demographic fact of an aging population overall. And that is a, that's a universal feature of most jurisdictions through the province. It's a similar story when we look at growth in households and housing. We translate the population by age into households and housing by type. And you can see very rapid housing growth in recent years, set to continue, but, but somewhat moderated pace and to be very rapid, certainly higher than the historical average, but slowing somewhat over the period of 2046. Short-term housing growth, as I mentioned earlier, based on a very active development pipeline. And when we look at the building permit issuance that's occurring, very active indeed. This is just the forecast for the permanently occupied housing units. There will be a seasonal, a forecast of seasonal units as well, and I'll, I'll show you that a little bit later. But overall, it's about 10 and a half thousand housing units over the next 25 years. We look at the types of housing, we're looking very closely at the, the market trends that we see on the ground in the county, how those might change as the age structure of the population changes over the next 25 years. And to a lesser extent, the effects of planning policies, both provincial policies and county policies that seek to promote certain types of housing, especially affordable housing. So the, the growth mix moving forward assumes a slight shift away from the low-density, single detached unit form to perhaps more of a row house form, a more affordable form in certain, mainly more urban areas. And then particularly in Owen Sound, a shift towards more apartment forms from the current 14% of the, of the overall share of the market to peaking in around 17% in the early 2040s.
I'm sorry to interrupt Mr. Stefan and Mr. Warden. I wonder if Stefan is interested in questions during the presentation, because I do see councillor Potter. Or would you prefer to wait till the end?
I'm happy to follow the Warden's lead.
It is to remain to this particular slide, Mr. Warden. And it is, okay, thank you. Thank you for your indulgence. And thank you for your presentation. And I just wondered, we see a great need for more attainable housing. So this almost suggests to me that, and, and maybe I'm reading it incorrectly, and that's really what I'm asking, is are we going to need more in the way of attainable, that missing middle type of housing in the future? Or is this telling us that that really won't be a requirement?
Well, through you, Warden. No, I, I think that it will be a requirement. It will be a requirement in, in more areas than others. And so when we, when we look in a couple of slides at the breakdown of the housing mix in Owen Sound, for example, you will see where, where perhaps there is a concentration of the need for that type of housing. You'll see a, a lot of the, the apartments are concentrated in Owen Sound for that reason. But certainly what you're seeing here, although when you look at the red portion of these bars, you see it only, you know, growing marginally, that's actually quite a significant shift for a housing market. So moving on then, just to look at the job side of the, of the picture. And if you look historically, you can see that, you know, the county's experienced quite sporadic employment growth and was hit like many other places in the 08, 09, by the 08, 09 recession. And only indeed started to recover from that, you know, in the 2016, 2021 period. And, you know, the countywide employment forecast will in part be driven by the fact that the population is increasing. A bigger population will need, you know, more services and a broader range of services. And the services sector is, is a big component of the, the local economy in the county. We were asked to look at COVID impacts and, and certainly, you know, we would suggest that a lot of the impacts will be short-term. A lot of the lost jobs are jobs that can quickly rebound after we exit this lockdown and we all get vaccinated. So jobs lost in food and accommodation and tourism, we would anticipate those all being able to rebound relatively quickly once this is all over. And, and indeed, you know, the job losses in Gray were not as significant as in many other places of the province because, you know, those losses were offset by an increased number of day trippers seeking to escape the, the more urban parts of the, the province and, and as I say, seasonal home use and in migration from, from work at home workers and early retirees and that sort of thing. I see a hand, Mr. Warden.
Councillor Keeveney.
Yeah, councillor Keeveney, go ahead.
Warden, if I may, and, and thank you, Stefan. I'm curious about your last comment here suggesting job losses in the food industry, restaurants in particular, because what I'm seeing is that restaurants are struggling more so than they ever have to secure staff. It, it really is a crisis. Restaurants are having to close days during the week and, and, and go forward with lesser opening hours than they have in the past. So I'm, I'm just wondering about your thoughts on that. And sort of when you arrived at, at the suggestion that, that this is a concern of the jobs lost? And that was quickly moved as restaurants have reopened into a position where, as I say, restaurant owners are struggling.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. And I apologize if, if I wasn't clear about this. I mean, what I meant to imply was that when you look at job losses overall, although there've been some acute job losses in particular sectors, there's also been some, you know, there's been offsetting factors that have sort of, that, that are present in Gray that are not present in other places. And so that's, I, that's what I wanted to imply. And I, I guess the other point to be made is that it's, it's from, from the perspective of individual businesses, there is a lot of anguish, I understand that. And they may never recover. So, but that is a, that is a different thing from looking at the sector as a whole and how it might recover. So we would expect the demand for restaurants, for example, to return once people can return to work. But if, but that's small comfort for somebody who hasn't been able to make it through the actual pandemic period.
Good, councillor Keeveney?
Mr. Warden, if I may, yeah, I don't, that wasn't quite the point I was trying to make in suggesting that we are at a crisis for workforce. We probably have the lowest unemployment rate in Ontario and the businesses are struggling to get help. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, councillor. And, and all good points, and I would agree with that, too. In terms of the, the land use categories that we divide the, the employment into, there's, there's really three. There's the employment that's going to be located primarily in areas which are geared towards providing housing, so residential areas, neighborhoods. The, the so-called population-related employment that meets the needs of local residents, both permanent and seasonal residents. So that will be your local retail, accommodation, food, education, other institutions, as well as the work at home jobs. And that, the planning for that will be done through the community plans for residential areas. And then we'll have the jobs that require, which are sort of in activities that require dedicated lands for employment uses, segregated from residential areas. And that would be your more industrial manufacturing, wholesale trade, transportation, construction, that sort of thing. These will be accommodated on designated employment lands in industrial parks and business parks. And then an important feature of the Gray County employment overall is, is that a lot of economic activity takes place in rural areas, not on designated urban lands. And obviously, there are agricultural related for sure, but also small-scale manufacturing and construction that occurs on farms and other areas and rural areas. And a lot of tourist-related activities that occur in rural areas as well. That will continue to remain an important feature of the landscape over the next 25 years. And so this is a breakdown of those three categories. You can see the largest category is the population-related employment in the gold. But a significant component will be on the employment land, on the employment lands. And the distribution of those employment lands and the jobs associated with it will largely depend upon the available supply of those lands in, across the county. And then the rural employment distribution will, will really base, will be based on historical trends. Moving now then to the, to the distribution of the population between the area municipalities. And so there's been a bit of a shift here in the allocation. In 2018, the, the growth management strategy assumed that housing would be fairly evenly distributed across the county. No area municipality had a greater than 18% share of the housing growth overall. And so here, it's a little bit more concentrated in, in some areas over others. Certainly, the, the Blue Mountains, and especially in the early years, is, will be the focus for much of the housing growth. And it has more than 50% of all the units that are in the county development pipeline, sort of been approved or pending approval for development. And then you'll see that there's quite a significant share of population growth assigned to Hanover. Recognizing that Hanover is now evolving into a full-service community, it has the potential for more housing growth and quite ambitious plans to achieve it as well. And recognizing the, the, that, the changes that have occurred in Dundalk and the evidence we see from a bit further south in Shelbourne, for example, where, you know, Shell, the people are moving into Shelbourne and there is a strong commuting relationship by people living in Shelbourne and working in Peel region. We expect that that will spill upwards north into Southgate and, and a corresponding increased share of the population to Southgate as a result. This is a breakdown of the housing units by unit type and, and further to the earlier, the earlier question by the councillor. You can see that, you know, the apartments very much focused on the city of Owen Sound. But nevertheless, the, the shift in the housing mix evident across the board.
Stefan, I do see it. Councillor Sampson.
Yes.
My apologies, councillor Sampson. Please go ahead.
No problem. Thank you very much, Mr. Ward. Just on this slide. A bit, bit word that the definition of apartment that you use may not mean, but we would normally think of an apartment. I know that, for instance, if you take a look at the statistics in the Blue Mountains, it will say that we had, we built 100 and some odd apartments over the last year. Those are in fact half a million to three-quarter million dollar condominiums, not rented out to anybody, typically occupied by owners, potentially rented out as a ski salae or whatever, but not readily available in the definition of apartment that I think the common person would have. So I'm just wondering whether or not we, when we talk about apartments, we need to be clear that these are actually, I think, the definition of the county uses as any building that has three or more units in it, which, which I, I think clearly defines use as it relates to infrastructure demand. But I think would not be defined truly as an apartment, i.e. i.e. something that's rented out to somebody who who can't afford to own a unit. So I'm just wondering whether or not we need to be a little bit clearer when we use that word, because because this would imply that we are somehow quite adequately servicing the needs of those who want to rent. And the fact is, across the county and certainly in our town, we are not. I think the number of how rent apartments that have been built over the last year for actual rental by people who want to rent them normally is zero. And and so but the statistics would not would not indicate that. So I'm just wondering whether you can comment a bit through you, Mr. Warden, to the presenter on 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 how we get a little bit finer definition of that.
Well, through you, Mr. Warden. It's a it's an excellent question, and it's a, you know, somewhat difficult to answer. So the 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 forecasts here by unit type are based upon the built form of building of of homes. And the reason for that is because we rely really on the census data to establish the base and and the forecasts, and all of the census information is based on the built form of the units. And so we we do not account for the tenured or the tenure arrangements of units, whether they're rental or owner-occupied, for example. And so I think the phenomenon that the counselor is referring to is 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 not being picked up in the in in the figures that you see here. We have not distinguished apartments by tenure, and that would be a very different kind of analysis. But certainly, I would suggest something that is an important element of, you know, the official plan and the planning policies that's required to sort of, you know, get to where you want to achieve, but but that would not, you're right, be reflected in in these figures here.
Yeah, as a follow-up, Mr. Warden, if I can, I guess, to the extent that these numbers and these projections are driving that work in the official plan and other documents, I think we need to be mindful that that this call, these two columns here on the apartment growth can be highly misleading as it relates to the use of of those built forms. And if, in fact, we have a shortage of those types of uses in the county, we sure as heck better be identifying it and highlighting it and not, as it seems to be here, sort of hidden under a general category that is not really reflecting what's actually going on. Built form is helpful, but use is our problem. We just don't have rental units in the county. We have none available, literally, in the town of Blue Mountains, yet the statistic would seem to indicate that's not the case. And 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 I worry that when we go down to the provincial level and try to explain the situation, they might look at the data that we're we're assembling and say, no, that you've got lots of apartments here. What's your problem, when in fact, we don't?
Counselor Potter, I'm coming to you next, but before that, perhaps our C A O. Thanks for chatting.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I think we're really looking for two different pieces of information or two different analysis. As Stefan said, this is really about the the built form and about land use rather than affordability or a further discussion about housing attainability. So I'm not, I think there's room for both of those conversations. I just don't think that the affordability question is is part of this particular analysis. Is that fair, Stefan?
Yes, I think so.
Thank you. Counselor Potter?
Thank you, and I guess to that point, a lot of our housing in the Blue Mountains is part-time, and I I'm not sure Counselor Sampson might might back me up on this, but I'm not sure I see that reflected here. We know that there's a lot more housing here than is being shown in in these numbers, and that's not talking about attainable housing, that's talking about part-time and seasonal, weekend-type of housing. So and and eventually, we have found that those people become full-time residents. So I I just wonder how we're reflecting that in this study? Or if we are?
Yes, and and through you, Mr. Warden, again, that's an excellent question. Thank you, Counselor. These units that you see on the page here are only permanently occupied units. We have done a seasonal unit forecast, and and you'll see that in a few slides to come.
Okay. May I continue?
Okay, this slide just lays out the the distribution of the employment. And as I mentioned earlier, that, you know, the population-related employment will generally follow the population growth. And as far as the employment land employment, that will be really concentrated in areas which have the ability to provide serviced employment lands. Excuse me. And this is a breakdown, then, of the of the jobs by type, by area municipality. This then is the slide which lays out the seasonal housing unit forecast. So it's it's a separate forecast, it's layered on top of the of the permanent dwellings. So the seasonal homes are shown in gold here, and we have them fairly steadily increasing over the period to 2051. And when we look at where they will be concentrated, as you might expect, the town of the Blue Mountains, which already has the lion's share of these kinds of units, expected to continue to to that to be the case over the over the long term, and other places like Gray Highlands as well, and other other areas.
If I could stop you a second, does that Counselor Potter or Sampson? Help illuminate the question that you were asking about?
It it does. I I guess I wanted to highlight the point as much as to get an answer, but thank you. And and that, yes, that does help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So then, just finally, I just wanted to stress that this has been a highly consultative process, and we've we've relied heavily on the advice, review, and comments we've received from area municipalities throughout the process, and they've certainly informed the assumptions and led to a number of revisions of the results to to make sure that they properly reflect the on-the-ground conditions in the area municipalities. We had an initial consultation with the area municipalities in in October, and that included sort of individual one-on-one interviews with with staff, and we circulated the results that that you've seen today to them in the early part of this year. And we've gone back and forth with with several of them on to make sure that that the results sort of reflect, you know, the 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 data on land supply and the expectations for near-term growth. And I I just wanted to express my thanks to all those of the area municipalities who who helped with the process, and it's been very valuable to us, and I think it's reflected in the final results. So with that, I'm that that concludes my presentation, and, Mr. Warden, I'm I'm happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Sampson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Going back to your first slide, or maybe it was the second one, when you took a look at the 2018 G M S, and how we how I think to your words, you kind of missed the target. I'm not sure whether you said those exact words, but that's your your thrust. What what in the matrix in the metrics of the model of 2018 or the assumptions did we miss that drove the gap difference? And then have you used that learning as you designed your 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 current G M S forecast? In other words, can we kind of learn from what we didn't get right in 2018 and and kind of build that into the fix for this particular perspective?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. It's an excellent question. It the hardest thing to do in in forecasting is to pinpoint the exact time a sudden surge in growth occurs. And, you know, whenever you look at forecasts, you you, you know, we tend to not try and sort of map out the peaks and troughs. It's we try and sort of give a gradual curve. So we knew at the time of the 2018 G M S that things were going to turn around and and there was going to be sort of a growth uptick. We did not have the benefit of all of the material coming out of the 2016 census. So, you know, our our sense of what was happening on the ground was, you know, not quite as clear as as it is now. And plus, as I say, you know, what's been happening in the last three or four years at the fringe of the G G H and the problems with housing affordability that is pushing demand outside of the traditional housing markets, we didn't, we did not expect. And, you know, so all of added forms, you know, are are assumptions right now.
If I can follow up, Mr. Warden, just a quick one. Yeah, and the reason why I ask that question is is a theory floating around these days that there's a vast, but rather, quick de-urbanization occurring that has only been accelerated by COVID, or accentuated, if you will, by COVID, maybe both. In fact, what we're seeing is what happened in the previous 100 years was an urbanization, people moving from the rural to the urban sector. But now, for a number of social and economic reasons, we're seeing that exit. But that exit is happening not over 100 years, but over 10 or shorter. And in fact, COVID, I would argue, if you take a look at what's happened in our particular town alone, has shown a huge flashlight or spotlight on that. We've seen temporary residents now become permanent residents, and no indication that that trend is going to change. In other words, people have gotten comfortable working from home. People have gotten to use to the fact that you can actually live in the Blue Mountains or Gray County and quote-unquote "work" in Toronto. So I'm just wondering whether or not you're dialing some of that thinking into your modeling, because I worry that even the projections you have here are going to be on the skinny side when we look back at this four years from now because of this rapid deer and and concentrated de-urbanization that's happening. And there are quite a few people from well-known think tanks that are actually opining on this now, and and it's and the impact it will have on infrastructure in counties like ours that that over a space of five years will have to deal with growth that we may not have normally have seen in 50 years.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. I mean, it's an excellent point, and I I think that there's two things here. First of all, the answer to the question, you know, have we considered these changes in the forecasts, is yes, we have. But is are the numbers predicated on a fundamental reorientation of the pattern of settlement in Southern Ontario that is perhaps what you're describing, Counselor? I would say no, because it's we're still very uncertain as to what, whether the changes that have occurred since COVID are permanent or temporary. And I've read a lot of the the opinions that that you've read, and there are, I I think it's just fair to say right now, is that there are many differences of opinion about this, and I would caution the county on predicating of of an overly ambitious forecast on, you know, one one set of opinions about this. It takes something like work at home, for example. It's clear that this is, you know, everyone's been working from at home from one time or another over the last 18 months. And, you know, there's a there's a strong debate right now as to whether offices should be having their people come in and and work in the office again. Remember that the work work at home is really only practical for one sector of the economy, those who work in offices. So if you work in a school or a hospital, you're still going to have to go to your place of work. And so and, you know, there are a lot of offices in the G T A that I'm aware of that are that have said, come September or whenever vaccinated, you're back in the office. You're being paid, you're being paid a wage as if you're working in downtown Toronto, and we want you working downtown Toronto. We don't want you working from your cottage in Simcoe County or Gray County. So I think the approach will vary, and I think it's a little too early to tell how that will manifest itself. I think there are dangers to assuming too much right now. And although we're doing a 25-year forecast, I would encourage the county to update this work on a regular basis throughout that period to make sure that those trends, as they play out, are reflected in in the changes that are made.
Counselor Potter?
Thank you, and that's an interesting answer, and and I wondered what 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 might you be looking for? What sort of data or information or trends might you be looking for that would give us some idea of of what we're looking at? For example, I look at the fact that people are enrolling their children in school as an indication that they're at least thinking about staying here. But we don't know that, of course. So I just wondered if there are things that that you would take as indicators at this point, or whether we still need to wait and be a little more patient and see what what indicators come down the line?
Well, through you, Mr. Warden, I think, you know, one of the key indicators will be how quickly the development that has been approved for the next few years actually gets constructed. So, you know, we've had a lot of debate about the pace of development in Dundalk, for example. And, you know, there's been a lot of units approved, and in theory, it could play out very, very quickly indeed. But, you know, the demand for housing in Dundalk is very much tied to forces that are at play outside the county, the availability of jobs, you know, in Peel Region, the ability of people to commute from Dundalk down to those jobs, and how long it's going to take, the affordability of those homes relative to the affordability of homes in the northern part of Peel Region. And remember right now that Peel Region is under, actually, every municipality in the Greater Golden Horseshoe is undergoing a municipal comprehensive review under the provincial growth plan, and that is set to open up a whole swath of land for housing. So, you know, how that and those are direct competitors for, you know, developers in in Dundalk and and parts of Gray. So, you know, there's a there, I I I think that the key, one of the key indicators then to your to to your question is, you know, to pay 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 close attention to how the takeup of units in the next few years is relative to those approvals.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. And and just to to build off what Stefan has said and and to, you know, outline some background to some of Counselor Potter and Counselor Sampson's questions, the county is planning on on updating this growth management strategy quite regularly. And in fact, the the next scheduled update will be likely sometime in 2023 after we receive the full data sets from the 2021 census. And what we've noticed over time in in looking back at the different growth management strategies is they are long-term forecasts, but but they can also be shaped by by current factors. And and the one thing I'd point out is is we did a growth management strategy that was largely done in 2007 and passed in early 2008. And at that point, everything looked completely rosy, and we were expecting high amounts of growth. And of course, in 2008, we had the the global economic crisis. So by the time we got to our next growth management strategy in 2015, we had a bit of a contraction at that point because we we had a bit of a contraction at that point because we hadn't really hit those targets that we thought we were going to hit when we were forecasting in in rosy times. And that's not to in any way diminish from Stefan or or his team at Hempson's work. It's more or less to point out that that county staff are aware that there are a lot of variable factors at play here, and and we do see a lot of value in in keeping this document relative relatively current, even though, again, it is a long-term forecast. So we're going to mention this in the staff report later on, but we did just want to flag that we are planning on updating it here again in a few years' time.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands for now.
No, sir.
Okay. Oh, that's the Robinson.
Waiting whether to ask the question now because I'm engrossed in the in the study and presentation. So thank you for for the latitude. I'm looking at the chart which identifies allocation of population. And I I'm just wondering if Stefan, if you wouldn't mind just perhaps providing us just with a little more of a drill down in terms of what we're seeing for the population forecast for our, all of our member municipalities up to twenty forty-six, if you might. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Well, I I I haven't really prepared to speak to the individual figures for each municipality. I mean, I can get into them if you like, and I have all my notes next to me, which I can dive into. But just in terms of the overall distribution, I think that, first of all, we recognize that in the short term, we have a pretty good idea of where the immediate construction activity is occurring, which development proposals have been registered, i.e. there's nothing stopping people from taking a permit out and building, and which have been draft approved, i.e., you know, are probably within, you know, a two win, two-year window, a three-year window of being able to pull a permit. And when you look at all that stuff together, you see that about fifty percent of all the housing in that, what I call the development pipeline, is in the town of the Blue Mountains. And so our expectation then is that, you know, the the town of the Blue Mountains will, you know, grab a lion's the lion's share of growth in the short term. As things play out a little bit later on, when we look at Southgate, again, we've had a bit of a sort of a back and forth with with the staff at Southgate because it's not so much that the the potential for growth in Southgate, I think we all agree that Dundalk is a place that, you know, could take off at any time. And certainly, you know, there's lots of active developers there and there are plans to expand services. It's really a question of how long that takes and whether there are sort of bumps in the road along along the way. But certainly, when you look over the long term, there's lots of potential for growth in Southgate, and that's reflected here in the table. Although, you know, we may be taking a little bit more of a conservative approach to how quickly that occurs than than how some of the staff may may feel about it. Hanover, too, is a place where, up until very recently, has been constrained by its own municipal boundaries. It is an unusual municipality in Ontario in that, you know, when the amalgamations, municipal amalgamations of the nineties and the early parts of the two thousands took place, it it was not amalgamated with a large rural area. So, you know, unlike Dundalk, which is in Southgate with a large rural area, Hanover is kind of like, you know, its own little town and does not have a sort of a rural hinterland. And as a result, it has, you know, the feeling is that there's a pent-up demand for growth there that has been constrained by its land boundaries and some servicing constraints as well. And and, you know, environmental protection on on certain lands. And so there's a lot of activity that the town has undertaken to try and overcome those constraints. And we agree that there is a lot of potential for population growth in Hanover. And we've worked very closely with them to to try and map out how that might occur. And so there's a significant share in Hanover as well. Elsewhere, you know, in the more sort of rural and less urban places, I don't think you're going to see too much difference in the in the overall population growth. We might see a a bit of an uptick in some places to reflect that sort of early retiree phenomenon that I was that I was describing earlier and the phenomenon of people converting their seasonal homes into into permanent residences and living in more sort of rural landscapes, either as retirees or if they're going to be working. It would have to be, you know, a full a full work-at-home lifestyle or a lifestyle where you're only going into a job in an urban area in the GTA, you know, once or twice a week. So I I hope that addresses your question, councillor, unless there was something more specific you wanted.
I wonder if you could, and I appreciate the the time spent on this for certain, but wonder if you can also speak to the other municipalities that that you have not mentioned as of yet within that allocation of population chart. Thank you.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Warden. I mean, Meaford and Jordan Bluffs, those are, you know, those are municipalities that are less urbanized but share features in common with the town of the Blue Mountains. So and there and and in that respect, quite different from the rest of the county. So, you know, that's where you get a lot of seasonal units, a lot of a lot of tourism. And and so a lot of the population growth then associated with those places would be arising from those kinds of activities. And then, you know, West Gray, Gray Highlands, you know, we're not talking about very urban places there. And so, you know, population growth would be fairly incremental without much opportunity for urban settlement areas to expand and accommodate, you know, significant amounts of population growth there. And then I I well, and then there's Owen Sound, of course. And, you know, Owen Sound is tricky because, you know, it is the central city of the county. And as you saw from the previous slide, you know, it's a place that where population decline has been a feature of the landscape for many, many years. We we anticipate that reversing. And so as it functions as a central city, it will continue to attract, you know, certain kinds of population-related employment, particularly centered on institutions and commercial activity that befits the central city. We think there's and there's certainly a fair amount of development in the in the pipeline there. Apartment development proposals, quite significant apartment development proposals. And so we do see a reversal of the longstanding population decline in Owen Sound, notwithstanding it will it will still remain a place where the population is older generally than the rest of the county. I think that's clear. People, you know, older people, you know, want to be in a place where they can walk to to grab their groceries. They want to be close to a hospital. That sort of thing. So but at the same time, overall growth in the county and the kind of sort of things that are fueling growth, migration from older adults as well as from younger families, that will translate into, we anticipate, small population increase in in Owen Sound.
Thank you. Are we good, councillor Robinson?
Thank you very much for that explanation. Most appreciated.
Okay, councillor Potter.
Thank you for indulging me for one more question, Mr. Warden. Because when I I look at the allocation of population chart that's on the screen now, and it says the population for the Blue Mountains will be about sixteen thousand by twenty forty-six, we would argue that we've already surpassed that. We have over eight thousand households, and we don't all live alone. So, you know, when everybody's here and when we look at the services that we're providing and that the county's providing, we're already surpassing that sixteen thousand population. So I'm not sure what the situation would be for the rest of the county, for the other municipalities. I wouldn't be surprised if it was if not the same in in scope, at least the same in in the in the fact that it's happening. So it's it's not that I want to question, but I think we have to take this in the perspective that whatever is here for us, that number may be double easily by twenty forty-six, what we see there. We may be more in the thirty-two thousand population range in terms of the population we're serving. Because the part-time residents still need garbage service, they still need roads, they still need all the services of full-time residents. And we we have that same responsibility, and so does the county. So I think that's something we have to bear in mind, that the numbers we're seeing here are are great information. But there may be more more to it behind the scenes that we need to delve in a little farther, and and I'm sure that's true for all the municipalities.
Councillor Potter, you're saying there may be more to the story. Stefan?
Yes, Mr. Warden, and there is more to the story. I mean, this this population that's shown here is the is the population that's recorded in the census. That is, people who are saying, I live full-time in the town of the Blue Mountains and filling out the census accordingly. So the seasonal population, like the seasonal units, is a separate part of the forecast. It's not reflected in these figures at all.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. If if this is wrapping up discussion, I did just want to thank Stefan and the team at Hempson on behalf of county staff. They've been excellent to work with on this project, and they've been very receptive to our constant questions and and the the great feedback we got from member municipal staff and and consultants in that regard. So just in this public forum, I'd like to offer our thanks and gratitude in this regard.
Very much. Thank you very much, Stefan.
Thank you.
Great information. Good discussion. Okay, we're moving on now to item, excuse me, item six B. That puts Kim on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, let me just get it on the floor.
Do the things.
We're dealing with the solid waste management feasibility study. Sorry for that pause. That threw you off. It is moved by councillor Burley and seconded by councillor Keveney.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, everyone. Just a little bit of a catch-up here. Last February, council provided direction to staff to pursue funding from the municipal modernization program in support of undertaking a feasibility study with regard to a role for the county in some or all aspects of solid waste management. We received a response from the Ministry of Municipal Fairs on June thirtieth, and I think you were all copied on that correspondence that we'd been approved for the maximum available grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it was great to see that financial support. However, the timeline associated with the grant is very concerning. The province in their correspondence had suggested that they'd like to see the report wrapped up by November thirtieth. So last week, I had a discussion with all of the CAOs from our member municipalities. They were unanimous in their belief that the deadline needs to be extended in order for this project to be successful. I also did check with one of our consulting firms that has quite an extensive knowledge of solid waste management operations in the county. And they agreed that even a six-month window would really require all hands on deck. I spoke to the province and asked for an extension to March of two thousand and twenty-two. They offered me January. And I I countered with the February eighteenth that you see here, thinking that with March being their year end, I was trying to find a date that that might satisfy them. I have not heard back yet from from the province about whether or not they will accept the February eighteenth deadline. So, you know, are really the questions that we need to focus on today are really about the scope of the project and the and the timeline that we would be trying to meet. I really wanted to emphasize how important the engagement of your staff is in our ability to be successful with this study. You can see here that one of the recommendations is that staff be directed to strike a project steering committee with membership from each municipality that we work through a draft RFP process and then bring that back. So they think this, again, would need to be a very iterative process. Until I have RFP results, I don't know about, A, how many consultants will be able to secure at this time, given how busy everybody is, or whether or not the grant funds will be sufficient to carry out the project or whether the county will need to provide additional resources to complete this task. But that's a decision that we could make further on down the road after we've actually let an RFP. So what I was asking for you today in the resolution was, are you okay to go ahead if we can get the extension to February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? Are you prepared to support your staff participating on a steering committee and putting in the really the extensive amount of time that it will require? The county is more than happy to do the procurement and to facilitate all of discussions, provide oversight to the consultant. But at the end of the day, the information that the consultant needs to be able to complete this project successfully is information that resides with your individual municipalities. I don't have that, so our consultants will have to engage with your staff extensively in an information gathering and analysis exercise. If we're not successful in having the project extended to February of two thousand and twenty-two, then I think we're at another decision point. Do you want to see this put into the two thousand and twenty-two budget for consideration at a future time? That's what I'm suggesting here. You may have other suggestions. I'm happy to answer any questions. The scope of the of the project, what it would entail, is what we discussed a lot when when we talked about this in February. And you can see at the beginning of my report, there's a paragraph there about the objectives of the third-party review and the expected outcomes of the third-party review. That's the material that was provided to the province. So this, those objectives of undertaking an assessment and comparison of solid waste management services and making a determination on whether there's a role for Gray in solid waste management service delivery, any cost savings or operational improvements. That's the basis on which the province provided the grant funding. So that's what we would need to provide back to them if we were to move forward. Happy to discuss anything you might want to talk about.
Thank you very much. Kim, are there any questions, council? I'm not seeing. Oh, I see councillor Mackie.
Thanks, Warden, and thanks, Kim, for the report. I mean, I think getting information is always important, but I am concerned about what the total amount of this project may be and, you know, what the off-ramps are going to be. My understanding is we would require a triple majority if we're going to go down this path, and I'm just wondering when that decision would be made and how much money we spend prior to getting to that point.
Well, I it would be my belief that the feasibility study, which would include some sort of public engagement process, would at least inform a discussion at county council. I think after that, you'd have to assess what the findings and recommendations were out of the study to then determine whether or not you wanted to take it any further than that. At this stage, there we're not, we don't, I don't believe we have any information on which to say anything about what we might do in the future. At this stage, we're not, I don't believe we have any information on which to say anything about what we might do in the future.
Anything further, Scott?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sampson?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you, I'm just wondering whether, looking at the scope of work, we should also add in an assessment of the liabilities associated with the operations of waste management, whether those are liabilities, are financial, or otherwise. I know there's an assessment here of the current value of the assets each municipality has, but I'd like to understand. I think the council should understand the liabilities associated with those assets. Because sometimes they are current, and sometimes they are future. Sometimes they're recorded very well, and sometimes they're not. Some might be future, and some might actually be historical. There's liabilities associated with leachate management, for instance. It's historical and future and current that need to be considered, and I think council needs to have a full understanding, not only the assets, but the liabilities that come with these assets. And secondly, there's a reference here to maximizing existing disposal capacity, and I I think council should also, when it makes its decision, understand where the site will be for additional capacity, and that discussion needs to be had at the time the decision is made as well. Because I think to assume that the existing capacity in ground, if you will, in the county is sufficient for our future demands might be, well, it might be misleading, council, for make that decision without knowing where a new capacity was going to be installed and who was going to be the host municipality for that new capacity. So I would like to add that to the scope of work, suggest that that be added. So the information coming to council that would encourage a decision around these off-ramps was complete and fulsome.
Through you, through you, Mr. Warden. Yes.
If I might.
I'm sorry?
Just one quick second, if I might. I'll let you go in a sec, but Madam Clerk, are these issues of liability and capacity, in your view, representative of an amendment to what we have before us or not, or can they simply be, you know, taken into consideration?
I think the CAO will probably address that, but what we're looking for now is just approval to strike a steering committee with the approval of the province to extend that. And those things could be included with the staff steering committee and the RFP, but certainly Kim can commit, can step in if I'm incorrect there.
Thanks, Heather. And so a couple of things. First of all, clause three in the recommendation is asking that we report back to council with the draft RFP. So before it goes out, you would have another opportunity to verify that the scope of work was correct. With regard to liabilities, part of what was meant by, in the scope of work, the second bullet, consideration of regulatory, environmental, economic, and social factors, was casting a pretty wide net there around things that certainly would touch on liability, but that's something that we can be explicit about too, just to make sure that they know that they want a separate a separate discussion just around the liability question. As far as future, the requirements for future landfills and where they might be, my recommendation would be that this report was meant, this is a feasibility study, to really understand where we are right now and what opportunities might be present. I think getting into the discussion, if my experience and memories of Simcoe County have taught me anything, future landfill capacity is a whole question unto itself and might best be dealt with as a standalone item after we had had an initial conversation about how imminent that was and what opportunities we had before us. But again, I, council is more than welcome to direct me as they so choose.
Thank you for that, Kim. I should have just shut my mouth and let you speak.
It's okay.
I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk. So if that is the case, then is it time for us to put the question on the motion to receive and to enter into the funding agreement and to strike that steering committee and the direction around if we don't get the extension, moving it to 2022 budget? So calling the question, is there anyone opposed? Anyone being opposed, I'm going to say that that is Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on. Six C. We're dealing with the Employment Services Ontario Transformation. I believe that, oh, Elizabeth is on deck. And this is moved by Councilor Desai and seconded by Councilor, well, instead of Milne, we need a new seconder. I see Councilor Hutchison. So Elizabeth, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. This is a report for information only to update everyone on what is happening with the provincial transformation of Employment Services under Ontario Works. And they have opened the request for qualifications, asking those interested parties who may wish to be the service system manager for a larger geographic area than our own county to submit qualifying information. So it is not a commitment to take on any additional work. It is simply to express interest and to qualify as a potential social service system manager and to go to part two, which would be the actual RFP phase. The social services staff here and in three other areas have joined together to form a consortium of sorts to provide the qualifying information to see if we could be qualified to be the lead for that area and if the province would consider us to do it.
Okay, questions? I do not see any hands. You must have done a terrific job, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Everyone understands what we're voting on? Then I'll call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion before you? I see no hands, therefore it's Carrie. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Okay, we're on item six D. Dealing with the growth management strategy. We've had lots of information on this already. I believe that Scott is on deck for this. It's moved by Councilor Patterson and seconded by Councilor Keveney. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and members of council. I will keep this brief since we've already had a good discussion and a lengthy presentation on it. I think the key takeaway from what Stefan had shared with us is the county is growing, and we are growing all across the county at a more rapid pace than previously predicted. And this speaks to the need for long-term planning at both the county and municipal level to make sure that we have our services and infrastructure in place to accommodate this growth. And certainly, the county staff, if a committee supports the report today, are looking forward to starting to address this through an official plan amendment. Just before I wrap up here, I did just want to address a few of the comments that were raised by county councillors during some of the great questions to Stefan in this regard. I believe it was Councilor Keveney that raised concerns and issues about the labor pool. And as a staff, we fully agree with you in that regard. And although it might not be something we can address through this growth management strategy, it's not something that the county is silent on, and we've been working quite closely with our partners in economic development, both at the county level and through various municipalities and agencies, to try to look at what we can do to help fill the gap in the labor pool in that regard. Because we know, as our population ages, it only seems to be getting worse in this regard. And so although it's not something that was explicitly addressed in the growth management strategy, we did want you to know that it is something that staff are working on, and through some of the partnerships that they built and Sidneyham Campus and the local integration partnership, there are actions being taken in that regard to try to address some of those issues. With respect to some of Councilor Sampson's questions about the definition of rental and whether or not the numbers shown in the Hempson study were reflecting what was on the ground from a rental availability perspective, sorry. Also, some very great comments, and it's something that, again, although it's not explicitly addressed in the growth management strategy, is something that, again, county staff are working with municipal staff on addressing. And there's a number of initiatives underway, including things like waiver of development charges for rental units and the community improvement programs and other incentives that are looking at trying to start to address that need. And I'm pleased to say that in recent years, we have seen more interest than ever before in new rental units. And there was actually a report that Randy and I took to the Affordable Housing Task Force earlier this week that spoke to some interviews we did with rental housing developers and rental housing landlords in that regard. And although there were some challenges across the county, no doubt, they did give a favorable outlook for developing new rental units across the county moving into the future. So again, I did want to let council know that we are looking into some of these issues. With respect to the next steps on the growth management strategy itself, again, if council receives the report, staff's intention would be to share that, of course, with member municipal staff, but also to share that with other public and private agencies, which may have use for this data. And certainly, and it was brought up in some of the council comments, the school boards would be key partners in that regard. So if the county has done work and invested public dollars to say that we're growing, then everybody who would have an interest in that information and that data should be able to benefit from it and not have to pay for their own studies in that regard. As I said, we are looking at the official plan amendments, and that official plan amendment would update the numbers, the growth projections in our county official plan. It would extend the planning horizon out to twenty-five years. And then we'd also be looking at a few minor housekeeping changes, just little things that we flagged as we've started to work with the plan for a few years now. So I won't belabor this point, but I will be happy to take any questions if there are any further questions from council.
Thank you, Scott. Councilor Potter?
Thank you. And Scott, for us, this leaves us in a bit of a conundrum because this report, as far as it goes, is fine, but it's not telling the whole story for us and maybe for other municipalities in Gray. In that, it's not addressing the issues. When we go to the province and the federal government and say that we have, we're dealing with so much growth, they don't normally understand what we're talking about because they don't see the seasonal numbers. So without the seasonal numbers being part of the overall picture and them being sort of off to the side somewhere, they don't really tell the story for us. And I suspect that there are other municipalities, I won't speak for anybody else, but I suspect there are other municipalities in Gray and the county as a whole that need to be able to show more clearly that what's really going on here is a lot more, a lot more growth than shows up in full time. So that poses a real problem, I think, for us and our ratepayers when we're trying to provide services and not really being recognized for what we are truly trying to provide.
Scott?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for those comments, Councilor Potter. I do think they're important, and certainly, Blue Mountains and a few other communities, as you've noted, in Gray would be experiencing that. I think what will be important to look at going forward in trying to interpret and use the results from the study is, as you've pointed out, to look at both the permanent population forecasts, and as Stefan said, that's, you know, what people report in the census, as well as those seasonal forecasts. And right now, the way the growth management strategy has laid those out is they are two separate tables. And right now, they are two separate tables in the county official plan as well. So really, to get that full picture, as you've kind of pointed at, you'd need to really add A plus B, the permanent plus the seasonal, to show the total growth picture. Even there, I think from a housing perspective, it doesn't necessarily capture sort of all the day-trippers that we know are coming to Gray County and coming to Blue Mountains and other areas in particular. But hopefully, some of that can be picked up through the rise as we see in employment growth. So it's certainly something we as staff can look at going forward, and whether or not it's worth trying to better paint the picture between those two tables, the seasonal and the permanent, and outlining both in the official plan and in the data that they need to be considered as a whole and not independent of one another.
Thank you, Scott. Randy, you have something to add?
Yeah, just further to what Scott's indicating, I think we've had some preliminary discussions with some of those municipalities that definitely see more seasonal growth, seasonal residents, and for sure with town staff. And it's, like Scott said, it's trying to combine the two and how we treat it through policy so that from a servicing and infrastructure perspective, we're getting that fuller picture. So it's treating, what we're talking about is like treating a unit as a unit, whether it's a permanent unit or a seasonal unit, they have similar demands on our services and infrastructure as a whole, as a collective, when I'm speaking with county and local municipalities. So that's something that we can look at, working with our municipal staff to address through policy when we bring forward the housekeeping amendment, for sure.
Right. I think the issue raised by Councilor Potter is legitimate, because what I hear him saying is that there's a full story to be told, and the numbers that they're currently saying don't fully tell that story. You know, I mean, when he hit me with the numbers around just units, we have eight thousand units, and we know that there's, you know, more than two, so we may already be there. That's a legitimate point. But I also hear you, Randy, in saying that the challenge is how you position that and how you get those those figures in to tell the true story. Councilor Sampson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So not surprisingly, I support what Councilor Potter is saying because I worry that, looking at the data, the way it's presented a number of years ago, got us and probably Collingwood in the hot water. We're, Collingwood's in deeper hot water than we are around some infrastructure supports because what has come up, as we've now heard from Collingwood, is that they're short water capacity, and they don't have the units for the growth that's being planned. Those decisions were made a number of years ago, and I worry based upon data similar to what we're looking at now. I don't want to fall in the same trap. I think I, you know, asked the question, did we basically learn from our previous mistakes? And I, I'm not sure I got a good answer back on that, frankly. I worry that we haven't. And as it relates to not just the Blue Mountains, but other parts of the county, but it impacts the county because county infrastructure services our area. I worry that we have lost in another chart somewhere this half of the population of our town that pays taxes and, you know, turns on the water and flushes the toilet when they come here every weekend, and that infrastructure needs to be there. And I guess the risk, the risk to us as a county of overestimating growth is that at least we have the infrastructure and the ground for growth. The risk on the other side, in my view, is disastrous. You have growth that's an infrastructure that's significantly trailing growth, and you don't have the cash to pay for. And I would rather err on being small-c conservative, if you will, or big-c conservative, I don't know, on the growth number than on the other side, because Collingwood on water, I think, and we perhaps in our Thornbury issues are facing capacity limits, because I think we used data that was wrong or misleading. Or if it was there, it was on another chart and another page of the document. I think it needs to be quite clearly upfront. We have, you know, half of our population non-permanent residents, and frankly, if you believe the numbers in the tourism side, three million people coming to this area every year to enjoy it for a week or a day. They turn the water on and they flush their toilets too. And that's a, that's a, that's a demand on infrastructure that we had better start to invest in now, not when it's too late. Because when it's too late, you scared that tourism away, and that has a serious negative impact on a lot of our businesses, which are tourism-related. So I'm a bit worried that this report is not telling the whole story, and it needs to.
Legitimate points, Councilor Sampson, Scott, or Randy, anything you want to add to that?
It's, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Very great points, and it is something that we can look further into. And as Randy said, we can explore both at a policy level, but also working with municipal staff who are seeing some of these effects on the ground floor. The one other thing I'd point out is these growth forecasts aren't just used in our official plan, and as Councilor Sampson was alluding to, they are used in other avenues as well. And and one of the um, you know, most imminent avenues that we're looking at using this in would be to inform our our um uh development charges background study that that Hempson is is working on right now. And in in past discussions with Hempson, you know, they've always cautioned us about about not being too optimistic um because if if we count on collecting money based on those building permits and then the money doesn't come in, then then we don't have the money for for paying for those services. But I certainly take Counselor Sampson's point, uh we don't want to go too far the other way either. So I think it's it's, the the point has been taken by staff, and it's something that I think we'd like to have further discussions with municipal staff on and and exploring at at the policy stage, both at our own county official plan review, uh but also in working with municipalities on on their official plans as well.
Thank you. I think that's it for hands, isn't it? If that's the case, maybe it's time to call the question. So on the motion, we're receiving the uh growth management, sorry, the addendum and the Hempson uh uh report. Uh we're going to share it with the other municipalities, and we're going to direct staff to prepare uh county official plan amendment.
Mr. Warden, I have a recorded vote on this, please.
Sure. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Um I will note that Counselor O'Leary has left the meeting as well, Mr. Warden. Okay, so we're voting on the addendum to P D R C W twenty-eight twenty, the updated growth management study. Counselor Mackey.
In favor?
Counselor Gamble.
In favor?
Counselor Burley.
In favor?
Counselor Carlton?
In favor?
Counselor McQueen?
In favor?
Counselor Desai?
In favor?
Counselor Patterson?
In favor?
Warden Hicks?
Yay.
Counselor Columbus?
In favor?
Counselor Keveney?
In favor?
Counselor Body is not here. Counselor O'Leary is not here. Counselor Woodbury and Millen have left. Counselor Sampson?
No.
Counselor Potter?
Opposed.
Counselor Robinson?
In favor?
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yeah, in favor?
Thank you. Motion is carried fifty-five to thirteen.
Thank you very much. Clerk, we'll move on with the agenda.
Mr. Warden?
Yes?
Just to follow up to that, um we know we did a lot of the stats, stats can, whatever was done this year. Um I guess through the planning staff and or the C A O, subsequent to this coming out today, um it will be interesting to what data comes from back app shot during COVID. Um I guess the question is, when will some of that data come trickling back from this year? And and will we be able to do a sort of a uh an overview of this report from that data? I know that that data sometimes comes in little pieces at a time, so it's sort of hard. And we're working on old data even as of today. But any any discussion around that when we start to see some trickling out of of that data?
Deputy Warden, we've seen this story before. Randy?
Through through you, Mr. Warden. Um so we start seeing some of the data, like some of the higher level population data uh coming out usually about a year after the census. But we really don't get the full data, the full detailed results, until usually two years after the census. And so with that, we've actually planned to do uh a another update starting in twenty twenty-three and maybe towards mid or later in twenty twenty-three when we actually get all the full data sets. Um but that's that's the plan is to to time it on a go-forward basis, at least, uh updating the growth management studies in in alignment with the census period, two years after this each census period. Uh because that's when we usually see the full data results from the census, so. At the same time, we also will work with our local municipalities to continue to monitor what's happening in the ground uh through building permit information and other information. Because, you know, through what Counselor Sampson indicated earlier, um you know, we need to make sure that uh we have the services and the infrastructure in place to be able to respond to this growth. Um so so we have to continue to monitor this as as we go forward. And we'll be working with our local municipal staff, continue to monitor that as as we move forward.
Just to follow that, Mr. Warden?
Go ahead.
I I think it will be interesting to see what kind of stats do come out of that because, you know, it's uh it's it it it's just a different snapshot in time of what we've gone through and and we have seen the experiences of real estate and what's gone on in in Gray Bruce. And, you know, just uh just from what we see from real estate prices. The other part I want to raise is um certainly it's so important to follow what's happening in each municipality. Again, as you you do, because a lot of the subdivision approvals come through the county is is that part. So you are tracking that that part, but those trends. The only other thing is that, you know, we've sort of lost a little bit of conversation around is still that aging baby boomer. And where that is moving along, right? Because we know that that's just getting into that part of of that cohort that's um that's moving forward. And uh, you know, I I have used that that uh uh resemblance to or that uh uh reference to the the, you know, the David Foot, the Boom Bust Neko book that's, but it's moved forward in twenty years later, right? But that's where we're at, and a lot of that is through demographics and and that side. So it is interesting that we do have to keep that in the back of our mind because uh part of Gray Gray Highlands is south of Blue Mountains. But there are similar to what representatives of Blue Mountains are seeing. As I've seen trends where those weekend places have become more permanent resident places and and more specifically with the COVID. And I think it will be interesting as as uh I'm almost out of power here, as the uh the speaker today said, how, you know, the next six months will be will be a real determination of if what is that order of where you're working from moving forward once we come out of that. So that's going to be an interesting next six months as well. So anyway, all good information, very good information. You know, it helps us move forward, and uh all we can do is get the best data we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Um I'm moving things along now. We're on to item number seven. Is there any other business? Seeing none, uh item number eight, any notices of motion? Seeing none, we will move to the last item. And seeing some of the faces, people are fairly happy about this item. Um so adjournment is moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor, well, we need to find a a seconder. Uh Counselor Desai. Uh that we adjourn. I'm assuming no one is opposed to that. I want to thank everyone. That's Carrie, by the way. I want to thank everybody. It was, I I don't know, it was a very engaging uh meeting. We covered a lot of a lot of ground today. So thank you for that. Bit of a marathon there, but it was a very good meeting, in my view.
Mr. Warden?
Yeah?
Mr. Warden, will we get an update? I guess our next meeting, we'll get an update with your A M O or A M O delegations as well.
Yes, and uh, Kim, do you want to speak to A M O delegations?
Just briefly.
Okay, certain certainly. So um so just this afternoon, I, while we were in this meeting, I heard for from the Ministry of Health with regard to community paramedicine. Um yesterday, we confirmed um Ministry of Long-Term Care about the status of our redevelopment projects and the Long-Term Care Commission reports. Um we also, so that most of these are on the sixteenth, on the Monday. Uh Municipal Affairs about Affordable Housing and Coordination with the Ministry of Health for Supportive Housing is on Tuesday the seventeenth. And um Attorney General regarding virtual court and our hybrid process is also on the Monday. So we've we've had um confirmation of all of the uh delegation requests that we made.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Madam C A O.
All right, we're done. Thank you all. Have a good day and good weekend.
It's a P P S, Business After Adjournment.
Stay careful.
Thank you.